I want to just start off by reminding everyone of the mask mandate. This is the one and only warning that they must, your mask must be worn properly. If you are unable to comply with that, you will have to ask you to leave. But you can attend virtually. And we will begin with a moment of silence to honor our military members and their families who put themselves in harm's way to support our country's freedoms. And then we will follow it by the pledge of allegiance. Okay, tonight we have a special recognition, so I'll turn it over to you Superintendent Banner.
Thank you, President Anderson Pearson. And by proclamation of the government, January is school board appreciation month. Tonight, we have Jeff Miller, who serves as the principal of Tillicum Elementary and as the vice president of the Clover Park Association of School Principals with us to share some words in all of your honor. Jeff?
Good evening, President Anderson. Directors, on behalf of the administrative team, I want to say thank you for your commitment to our students and our community service and support of our mission to continually improve the education system for our students. Your sustained leadership and grounded decision making with student well being always at the forefront is a major contributing factor to what has made Clover Park School District great. Each member contributes his or her own strengths to the district, and those different contributions and perspectives make you a powerful group. We're a stronger team because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Miller.
Thank you. And we will now have remarks from the city council. So I see you.
Thank you very much, Chair Pearson. I'm Paul Logan with the Lakehead City Council, and I just have a few items for you to discuss, and hopefully they're items that I think that impact you, your district directly. Of course, the one is a sewer repair on Silicon Boulevard between Lakewood Drive, Lakewood Drive and Gravely Lake Drive, where the sewer pipe actually collapsed a bit. And there's been workarounds and whatnot. Now it's closed, and I'm sure it affects your bus routes because I have three schools within about a block of that. It remains closed. The repairs are ongoing, and we're hoping that it's due to be completed in early February. The other, another item that may affect some of your schools is Custer Elementary on Silicon Boulevard. There is a safe routes to school project. This is, that's a program you're well aware of. It starts at about the KFC and goes west on that north side of Silicon Boulevard. So that has started. It'll take a while, clearly. And this time of year with fairly short days, not very good weather. We're hoping for completion spring. And then really later on in the year, you'll see a lot more work on Silicon Boulevard when it comes to sidewalks and whatnot as a continuation of that program. Other item that we're really proud of, the last few years have been just a boom time for construction and building a better property tax base in the city of Lakewood. The new construction in 2021 totaled $157 million. That's down slightly from $160 million last year, but is well in excess of the 2019 figure of 88. Back just after the last recession, we were down in the teens some years. So the breakout is new construction was 62.7 million with commercial remodel 42.3. So those two items together, over $100 million, almost two thirds of the amount. Single family residential construction was 26 and a half million. Residential repair remodel was 11.9. Now for us, for the city, that's important, right? Because we get, under state law, we only get 1% per year additional property tax plus any tax on new construction. So new construction expands the pie beyond 1%. So building up a better tax base for us, that helps actually, the rates actually go down when the tax base is better. So I want to talk a little bit about Aspen Court. If you haven't heard that name, you may have heard it as the Comfort Inn property in South Tacoma on Osler Street. It came up for sale, and Pierce County put in 5 million. I think Pierce County, 5 million, City Tacoma, 5 million. We put in City Lakewood, 1 million. That gets us 12 rooms there for emergency shelter until it's converted into permanent supportive housing in about 24 months. So far, we've moved eight people into that. Our behavioral health contact team is the one directing that. So when they see people, and if you, if you run into any homeless people, and I know you have homeless students who are homeless, you should contact behavioral health contact team. They can help you out with that. The other item of note that I could have a real impact on some of your properties going forward, kind of long term, is we are taking a look at our tree preservation ordinance, the tree preservation ordinance that we currently have in place. It was last worked on about 2001. So it was due for an update, and there are a group of concerned citizens who have made it pretty clear that they would like improvements in the tree retention ordinance. We are putting together a tree advisory ad hoc committee of 13 members. Applications for that committee run through January 23rd, and I would think that the district would be a concerned party. It's, we're expecting a wide variety of views on tree retention. And it could very well impact what you can do on some of your properties going forward. Now, when I say that, right now, the only thing that's really protected is the Gary Oaks, and you have a number of properties where you've got substantial stands of Gary Oaks on them, and you've probably already been told that you need to help preserve them. But going forward, the definition may change. One of the things I think the committee will look at and maybe recommend to the planning commission and the council is that all trees, all significant trees, and right now significant is, I think, nine inches in diameter, but that can be raised and lowered. So this is potentially a very important issue for the district, and you may want to take part in that. You should certainly take part in the process. You may want to have somebody on that committee, or at least apply to the committee. So that's it for me. So thank you very much. If you have any questions.
Thank you. And then Paul, we can hear if you have any questions.
Sure. I do have one question. It's the Gravely Lakes. Update on that, you know, the roundabouts going in at the veterans, roundabout going in at Washington. Roundabout Washington's really started yet. Can you give us update on that? And then today I noticed that they put a bunch of big concrete blocks in front of the walnut, and you know anything about that, what happened there? I could speak to your second. But the first one, I don't know much about it. I haven't, I'd say it's a two-year project. So it'll go well into this year, maybe late this year, maybe even into 2023. I'm not sure. And so they'll just keep constructing roundabouts. The issue on the second one is there was cut through traffic. Some of those roads are, I'm just working off one city manager's comments in his city manager's report. I don't know if there were complaints from neighbors, but the roads are not in very good quality when you're, for those cut through traffic, some of those back streets, and they were substantially degrading very, very quickly in this cold weather. And so they're trying to redirect traffic and, you know. I would just pride because wasn't there, and they didn't change any signs of the work. They don't do that anymore. That makes sense, you know, but our roads are just tickets to Pitts. Washington's take a lot of hits through potholes for the winter.
We're gonna have some issues, might have to discuss that tonight. Our council meeting. The other questions?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We will now move to public comment. So the board welcomes public participation and civil engagement. We want your public comment sessioning for a maximum of 60 minutes. Please do not make remarks of a negative nature singling out specific employees other than the board and its secretary. If you want to give public comment, if you're virtual, please enter your full name into the chat box, and if you're here, please fill out the form. And you'll be given three minutes. And if you desire a response to your public comment, if you're in person, you can write your address on the back of the card. If you're virtual, you can either enter in your address, or if you do not feel comfortable with that, you can send an email to the superintendent's office. And we will call on the community for public comment in the order that your name appears in the chat box. Since we are hybrid, we'll do one in person, one virtual, and we will continue to go back and forth. Do we have? We'll start with in person first. Oh. Okay, and if someone picked up the number two and does want to speak, feel free to turn that in. So for the first card, we have Rachel Parks.
Good evening, board directors. Thank you for being here and thank you for your service, especially in the face of some difficult decisions you've had to make. I'm Rachel Parks, I'm a Lakewood resident and a Clover Park parent and staff member. I was recently disappointed, though, by your decision to postpone changing Clover Park High School's mascots. This change has been called for by some students and staff and encouraged by the state for a decade. The new law has forced the issue, and we can no longer continue to disrespect and misrepresent living cultures. Some have suggested we nearly change, we merely changed the image. And that may have been enough if we'd responded years ago. When calls for the change and research about psychological damage caused to Native Americans and students was known. But what image would be acceptable as a warrior? I have to ask. Civilians can't wear a uniform, and a person in uniform should be honored, not an image to rally behind. Even the minimal logo of our sphere right now is problematic. A student who was to draw a weapon or talk about a weapon would face discipline, yet it is part of our image right now. It's necessary for the well-being of our students. They deserve an image they can proudly rally behind. Change is hard, and I know you, the community, and myself have an attachment to the word earning, but we're responsible for modeling adaptation. For students, a mascot change will not change the character of our Clover Park High students. They're authentic, persistent, loyal, and supportive of one another, and that won't change regardless of the name change. Director Anderson recently quoted about Matt Zalznik, who says public schools are supposed to be where democracy is practiced and young people are learning democracy. I totally agree, which is why I was so disappointed that the decision disregarded the voice and democratic process our students were currently engaging in. Please let them practice, use their voice, and lead in this change. Thank you.
The next person is John McMD. All right, John, if you could state your full name and we ask you. Okay, John, you should be able to speak now if you could say your full name.
Are you calling John Arbeany?
It's the name on the. Oh, there's a. Okay, not, I think that's what it's named. Yeah. Okay, if it comes back on, we'll go to the next person on that. Next person is Steven. Oh, Steve. Yeah, Steve Felanetti. Sorry if we said your name wrong. Feel free to correct us. Or we have to search for the names on here. So it takes a time. All right, you should be able to speak now. Are they switched to a panelist? If you go to, they probably moved from. Why, why isn't it working? Hold on one second. Sorry, we want to make sure they're able to speak. Okay, so we have to go back to the chat. Sorry, we'll come back to this. Okay. Okay, we're gonna try it a different way. Katie, are you there? Right.
I, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
I just joined as a panelist, so that did work. So that's great.
Right, we will do that from now on then. So okay, your three minutes, can we start now?
Wonderful. Well, I'm so excited to be a part of the meeting. Happy New Year to all of the school board. And I am a New York Life agent and an alumni parent of a Lakes class of 15, a former ELO provider for the Tacoma School Public Schools before the pandemic. And I was looking for a way to volunteer and continue to support the children. And I've just become an ambassador for a program that I'm very proud of called the Grief Sensitive Schools Initiative, GSSI. And I believe that it aligns with your social emotional learning, the SCL practices being adopted across the nation, and some of your guiding principles to just support children and what they need to know in order to be successful. The GSSI curriculum gives school teachers and administrators the language to empathize with children who've experienced the death of a loved one while encouraging them to move on and move forward in learning. New York Life created the GSSI to help address a longstanding issue in the nation's schools. According to one of our surveys, one in 14 children will experience a death of a parent or a sibling by 18. Nearly 70% of teachers have at least one grieving student in their classroom, and about 92% of the teachers surveyed said that they had very little training on how to support their students. So only about 7% of classroom teachers are getting bereavement training. So studies show that unresolved grief can affect children socially and emotionally, leading to behavior and school performance issues. And only a quarter of those who lost a parent growing up say that their school was well prepared to help them. So the training is not long. The best part is, in addition to the training, the school receives a $500 grant to support with ongoing resources. I checked in our district, and none of our schools have received this vital training, and I would love to be a part of it. Both my daughter and I, who is an alumni, would love to be in a resource to be able to bring that training to the schools in our district. So I wanted to come on. That's, that's one opportunity. There is another opportunity for some granting for after schooling that I would love to talk with whoever is in charge of that for your district. Thank you very much, and thank you for all that you do for the citizens of Clover Park School District.
Thank you so much. And I also just want to mention, we see the other two individuals, John and Steve, as panelists, so we will come back. You sort of just, I'll do one in person and then come back. Okay, next is Candace Hernandez.
Hello, hello. I had filed a public records request for the meetings, the Zoom meetings. And after paying $6 for a flash drive that had two text files on it that both led to the same dead link, I think we need to find a better way. I think it would be wise that you guys livestream therefore store these live meetings on your YouTube Clover Park School District page. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, so I think John, and then the name's John McMD, so it looks like you're unmuted, so hopefully we can hear you. Can start your three minutes now.
Can you hear me?
Okay, so John Arbeany. Okay, can you, yeah, if you want to say your full name, sorry, we had some technical issues there at the beginning.
I don't know where the McMD came from. That's a nickname. But my name is John Arbeany. I'm a Lakewood resident. And the reason I'm speaking today is to bring up the issue of discipline within Clover Park School District. This is underlined by the fact that just a couple of days ago, at Clover Park High School, we had a stabbing. I did a survey of 123 minutes going back to 2017, and never found discipline, the discipline issues in the district mentioned in any of them. As a result of a FOIA request for disciplinary record since 2017 to 2021, I found that there were 36,000 occurrences in those five years. 36,000. And I am about to present a four-part series on Suburban Times, which will analyze that data from raw numbers by year, offenses by school, offenses by race, and then a list of the offenses and the number that occurred. A concerning statistic shows that offenses reported in 2021 between September and the end of November had dropped by 71%. There's got to be an explanation for that. Perhaps it's found in the Clover Park Association of School Principals in a letter they sent to the superintendent suggesting that zero tolerance be terminated. This amounts to essentially disciplining on a curve based on ethnicity or race, which I think is a huge mistake. The question I would have is, are we not now developing the criminals of the future by excusing essentially bad behavior? Take a look in the Suburban Times. It will be a four-part article over the course of next week and early next week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Ellie Wilson.
Good evening, board directors of Clover Park School District. My name is Ellie Wilson, and I'm here on behalf of the Promise Advisory Committee that works with the city council near and like with. And I just would like to let you know that we are still here, even though things have been very quiet. We are still here to support our students and our families of those students. And we will be working with the youth council, which has been actively engaged now for several years. We'll be working with them and possibly a summit coming up later in the year. Our focus this year is going to be mental issues that our youth have told us about, along with better communication. So just to let you know that we are here and we are supportive. We are connectors, we're cheerleaders for our students, and we have connections with a lot of resources in our district to provide that kind of support. Wishing you all a happy new year and success in this coming year.
Okay, that's all the in-person comments I have. So if there is any more, please let us know. We'll go back to virtual. Oh, yeah. Steve, I do not want to mess up your last name, so please feel free to let us know how to say it.
Hello, my name is Shabun Chan. I'm going to give my three minutes to Steve Felanetti.
Can you hear her?
Yes, okay, yeah, so she's passing her three minutes to you. So six minutes.
And then I'll take the next minutes up.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to continue on our topic, our last board meeting of the Clover Park School District versus the trans and transportation department stopping minority companies from assisting in transportation. And I want to assure the board and everyone listening that I went to Clover Park in the seventies and understand minorities and diversity and inclusion probably better than most people on the board. And I'm saddened to say that since the last month since we've had the meeting, when we tried to resolve these issues of Clover Park School District putting special restrictions on this particular minority company that is fully qualified to operate with the UTC insurance and safety and CDL bladders and drug tested, and then, and then, and then, and then. The board, the school district has doubled down in its attack and response against this company, trying to, with its attorneys, trying to get the company decertified by the WTC and get its insurance canceled. And it's not, this company's never had an accident. We're very disappointed. We tried to contact the superintendent who seems disinterested. We contacted the number two, the assistant superintendent. He said, if you want to come at us, you're gonna have to do it legally. The district has no intention of honoring its full diversity and equity and stuff like that. They're deeply entrenched in discrimination and non-communication and cover-up. If I'm wrong, if, if this company is wrong, I'm speaking for the company, then please, someone let us know. Please let us know that there is some special insurance requirement that is different. We, the assistant superintendent of Business Services and Capital Projects, when he was directly asked for the language or the document that shows the special requirement, he swore up and down that it was there, but was unable to provide it. And then essentially said, do a public records request if you want it, which we did. So we held off filing suit against Clover Park School District for discrimination because we were thinking, maybe it is there. Maybe we just don't know. Maybe, maybe this isn't discrimination. And of course, the public records request came back, not only was there not a special insurance requirement that the district has required of this company, but it admits. but it admits there is not one. Again, we're very disappointed, the district's done nothing. We like that the district looks diversified by having Mr. Banner as a superintendent. We, we are very disappointed in his inaction and his need to stay out of it. And, and I think that you're going to see Clover Park on TV pretty soon. We don't like that, we came to the district proud. You know, I, I went to school here, I went to Lockburn Junior High, I went to Clover Park School. We came to this district to help and instead we get shoved in the mud. And we're not going to let it go. We're disappointed and angry now that behind the back, behind our backs, that they're trying to decertify this company as a minority, women's-owned minority company and, and asking to take the insurance away. You know, we have attorneys also, and we also have friends in the insurance business. And we know exactly what the district has done and said. We're more than disappointed. I know that the school board can sit and talk about trees and cement blocks in your street, that's nice. But you should know who you're dealing with really. And that's Clover Park, which is like a, it's what it's doing now, it's like a small domestic terrorist organization. Again, if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, please feel free to contact, I'm going to put the email in there. Please feel to contact us and contact and say, well, we don't like you because your buses are this or because you've done this or because you have this. But there is nothing, there is absolutely nothing, it's just pure and simple. The district doesn't want a minority company operating in the district assisting with busing. And it hasn't, it hasn't continued. It's getting worse. Do I have another minute left or no? With we're here to do students. Yes, we're here to
We are losing your reception, it's gone south.
Locker and park. So they pulled up a professional square, it's true. Try that. But again, like I said, it's getting shut down and blocked, it's a bad door by the district.
Okay, thank you. Sherry, Sherry Arkell, you're up.
Okay, I'm Sherry Arkell and I'm from the Clover Park School District. This is actually a follow-up that I'm doing right now and it's directed to Mr. Wegman. So I'm going to read a letter that I will be giving him. "Mr. Wegman, on October 11th, 2021, I spoke at the board meeting and asked you several questions concerning your views on the recent equity policy to which you voted no. I personally handed you a copy of my questions and asked you to please give me a written response. I based my questions on the statements you made at the September 13th, 2021 school board meeting. I seek to better understand your views as they affect the education my child receives. You have not responded to me in writing, I shall assume best intent." My questions, number one, you stated that Clover Park's equity policy is a Marxist idea with the intent to spread communism in our schools. What are the resource materials you use to inform your opinion on the subject? Please list them along with the author's name, I would really like to review these resources. Number two, you stated that equity takes away resources from one child to give to another and that you question the fairness of that policy. Here's an example, 61% of the Clover Park students entering kindergarten do not meet the readiness requirements and enter school already behind. There is a correlation between kindergarten readiness and meeting third grade math and English language arts standards. Children who start school behind tend to stay behind. You voted no on the equity policy because giving children who are behind extra resources would be unfair to the 39% who are ready for kindergarten. My questions, please give a list of or expectations, please give a list of the resource materials you use to inform your decision that equity is unfair. If giving extra help to students who are academically behind is unfair, please explain how you intend to close the achievement gap. Is there anything in the equity policy that prohibits the 39% of the kindergarten students who are at grade level and above from receiving the instruction they need in order to excel? Please explain why it is unfair for children above grade level to receive extra instruction and resources if they need it. As the board member, you signed off on a Clover Park equity policy in 2004. Why have you now changed your mind about equity and education? Please give a few specific examples of how, under your oversight, from 2014 to 2021, the equity policy you endorsed was used appropriately. Thank you in advance for answering these questions and for being transparent. I respectfully request you leave your response to these questions in an envelope that I'll pick up on at the January 24th school board meeting. I believe my request for transparency is fair and my patience has been quite generous. If that meeting is virtual, please leave an envelope at the reception desk by that date and I will pick it up. The letter that I just read will be delivered if my husband made it to the meeting. Otherwise, it will be delivered tomorrow to the superintendent's office. Thank you.
Thank you, and we did receive copies of those letters. Thank you. Okay, Liz Scott. We'll get over to panelists.
Hi, my name is Liz Scott, I live in the Clover Park School District. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak on two things, one is regarding transparency and openness. I appreciate the board having open meetings, even the working ones. And the three minutes per person and one hour total for public comments is in keeping with all Washington school board meetings I could find and with most local public agencies. So I think that's, that I support that. I would like to strongly urge the board to work with your IT to provide easy access recordings. I think somebody else mentioned that of the meetings. It's hard for many, especially, many, especially parents with young children to attend in person or on Zoom. And I am hard of hearing, and so if I attend a person, a meeting in person, I cannot really hear what anybody's saying, especially with masks on. So having, being able to get easily, get a recording to listen after a meeting would be really great and helpful and it shouldn't be too difficult. You're already recording the meetings. And many other school districts have their minutes or their recordings available for people, so I hope you can do that. Second, I read in the Tacoma News Tribune that our new board member, David Anderson, wants to institute a voucher system where people can use dollars to go to charter private or to be homeschooled rather than public school. And I was surprised, I saw nothing in his many pieces of campaign literature or his public comments during candidate forums that I watched. I saw two that indicated that this was his plan. So I would like him to respond to what he thinks the effect on public schools would be if such a plan was instituted. And if in taking these public dollars with these private and charter schools be required to take any child in the community who applied. I'd, I'd like to hear how that would look and how he specifically thinks that would play out. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for anyone, I guess for all listening, if you did public comment and you would like a response, please make sure put your address or email address or send an email to the superintendent's office, so we can do that. Okay, thank you, everyone, I do not have any further public comments, so we will just check and make sure no hands are raised, we will move on. Okay, so we'll now move to reports from the superintendent, so superintendent banner.
Thank you, President Anderson Pearson. Our report will be relatively short this evening, just as we did not have two weeks of December, in terms of working weeks. I would like to say that as of the last board meeting, all public comment has been responded to as appropriately requested. Monday, January 17th, there will be no school in recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. On Saturday, January 15th, 2022, the city of Lakewood will recognize Dr. King through its annual MLK celebration. This year's celebration will be virtual, I believe it consists of approximately a 15 to 20 minute video that was compiled by the city. The district was represented on the city's MLK planning team. Regarding student achievement, I'd just like to remind the board that the Open Doors program has its mid-year program to award diplomas. That will be January 21st at 3:30 PM at the McGavick Center at Clover Park Technical College. And those of you that are wishing to attend, if you would give Carmen a call, we'll make sure we have seating appropriately. There will be section seating as per COVID mitigation strategies. In regard to staff appreciation, I want to continually just thank all of our Clover Park School District staff for their ongoing support during COVID-19. I would also like to thank in particular our maintenance, grounds, and custodial staff for their diligent work during weekends and early mornings as they fought the weather to make sure that school sites were safe. Lakewood Rotary Bicycle Donation, on December 18th, the Lakewood Rotary conducted its annual bicycle donation. Forty bicycles were delivered to students attending Beechwood, Carter Lake, Four Heroes, Idyllwild, Lakeview, Rainier, and Taiyi Park Elementary Schools. Each year volunteers assemble the bicycles in November. Schools identify students and the Rotary delivers the bicycles directly to families before the holidays. So thank you to our Lakewood Rotary and its many volunteers for supporting the Clover Park School District families. In regard to COVID-19, the Department of Health issued some guidance to provide more clarity. We got that late on Friday. The guidance aligns with the isolation or quarantine timelines that the recent CDC recommended. All indications are that we should expect a surge of positive cases over the next three to four weeks due to the Omicron variant. The district is analyzing how this guidance will impact our stakeholders and we will be updating our practices and processes and commuting with, communicating with stakeholders as appropriate. The district also will be analyzing the impact of staffing shortages and necessary steps to mitigate them, both instructionally and particularly with our transportation department. While we recognize that there may be incidents where it's necessary to consider the temporary closure of an individual classroom or even a school, the district will make every effort to keep from having to do this. The district is not currently considering any action. I want to repeat this, the district is not currently considering any action where the school district as a whole goes to remote instruction. And that concludes my report for this evening.
All right, superintendent banner. All right, we will move on to our consent agenda. Just as a reminder to our community, the board has had an opportunity to review these agenda items with the superintendent. And it, and sorry, we do have Carol that's virtual, so Carol, could you unmute yourself during this time when you need to speak or whenever you are ready to, I just want to remind you, you're on mute. Um, so is there a motion to approve items 22-062 through 22-068?
I have a I have a preliminary question, is the rest of this meeting being taped?
Yeah, it's, yeah, everything is.
So this will be available afterwards for the public?
Well, it is available right now, right now, our process is to not post the link, but we're talking about that later.
Okay.
As the item of discussion.
So in advance of the motion to approve consent agenda, I have an item.
So, yeah, we can do that during discussion and then you can move to make a motion to amend. Okay, so I guess that was how it, well, we'll see, I guess, if there's a motion and then we can discuss it and then you can do the motion to amend it, but that's usually how it goes, but we'll see, if there's not a motion, then we will go to the motion to amend. Is there a motion to approve items 22-062 through 22-068?
So moved.
Okay, there's a second, second by hand. So now we can go to discussion. Yep.
Okay, I would like 22-062 to remove.
Okay, so you're making a
Motion to
Okay, do you
The motion is Director Anderson. I noticed that the paragraph 22-062, I'm sorry, Director Anderson requests that the paragraph of the December 13th, 2021 meeting be corrected to read as follows. Director Anderson, also asked by the school board, is hosting, holding a virtual only meeting and if the meeting decision was made unilaterally. The corrected version would read, "The new president of the school board stated that the former board president made that decision based on the conduct from the last meeting. Further correction, the new vice president then stated that the decision to conduct the virtual only meeting was the consensus of the board. And the rest has stated, the former board president put this in the board briefs and only one director indicated an objection. Director Anderson requested a copy of the document, giving the president this authority." That's my motion.
So we'll remove that, so let's, so we'll remove that item to vote on it, but so we'll vote on the rest of the consent agenda and then move that, so we will vote on approving items 22-0, okay, 063 to 22-068 and we'll move the meeting minutes to an individual action item. Okay? So all those
Point of order.
Yeah.
Okay, so was this an additional motion or we had a motion, we had a motion on the table to do the whole consent agenda. Now we have a motion to amend that, so we have to vote on both.
Okay, so
We have to vote on the amended first, correct?
No, because we're taking that off as an individual action item. So you, you were, that's no longer part of the consent agenda.
Well, I, I guess, I struggle, you, you had a motion on the table. I, I think you don't need to take a motion to get something off the consent agenda.
That's correct.
Any board member can take it off the consent agenda without a motion.
That's correct, that is correct.
Okay, so we haven't done that, so can we go back and start over?
Sure, okay, so
I, I, before, hold it, before you start over, doesn't the, the agenda, the motion has to be rescinded and then we start over.
Okay, so we're rescinding the motion to approve items 22-062 through 22-068. Okay, you want to remove individual or item 22-062? So is there a motion to approve items 22-063 to 22-068? Okay, Anthony, lose it, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so since this is consent agenda, we'll just go to the vote now. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those in favor, say no. Okay, and the motion passed unanimously. Okay, so now we will go to individual action items. And the first individual action item will be 22-062, the minutes for the regular monthly meeting of the board on December 13th, 2021. So, sorry, David, go ahead and
Thank you, I just have three points to make. First, the minutes of December 13th, 2021 meeting should record that the second sentence in the paragraph in question was a statement made by the new president. Second, the minutes
Second, the minutes of the December thirteen, twenty twenty-one meeting should record that it was the new vice president who offered that night of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, that the decision to conduct the meeting virtual was the consensus of the board. That statement is missing. Third, the minutes of December thirteen, twenty twenty-one meeting should remove the sentence that reads, quote, per district policy, the presiding officer can change the venue of the meeting, end quote. This sentence should be removed because it is an insertion made after December thirteenth. Thus, the corrected paragraph, the stated order.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak to the request. In the regular procedure is that during agenda review, I request like this would be made in terms, because we make mistakes, mistakes can be made. We would, it would be made apparent to me during agenda review or at any time that the minutes are not correct. At which time we would then go back and look for accuracy to correct the minutes. We have no desire to have inaccurate minutes on the, on the docket. And so at this time, I would say that as your secretary, I do not have the opportunity to go back and look and show that they were correct or incorrect. My recommendation would be that this item is not up for approval at this time and allows the secretary to go and look for whatever it is that you're seeing, Director Anderson, so that we can say, yes, that's correct, or that's not, and then I would work with the board president. And then I would just suggest that you put these minutes back on the agenda for the next voting meeting.
On Wednesday, this last Wednesday, at ten A M., I submitted this to the superintendent and all members of the board, what I've just addressed. So I took issue with not having brought it up at the agenda review that afternoon, because that morning it was received by all parties concerned.
Correct, there was an email and the follow-up communication that I got after an apparent phone call is that the only changes that needed to be made to the agenda were the ones that we changed, and so maybe we're just in a miscommunication. I do agree with you, there was an email that came through, and then the follow-up later that afternoon was these changes need to be made to the agenda, so as the secretary, I guess maybe I shouldn't assume, but I assumed that that final call was that the changes that we actually made to the agenda were the ones that needed to be made.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is that this move to a future date by which it determined that we're seen.
Just so that as the secretary, I do have the opportunity to go back and look, yes.
Prove that.
And just for the future, we didn't receive the email, it's not standard to receive the board packet being emailed, but it's fine, but that's what the gender reviews are for as well, to mention that obviously on high and low meetings, that's not, so if you discuss it within the course as well during your agenda review. I would like to mention on your, if you're gonna, we're gonna go back and review. I, I've replied back to the vice president after this, so this cuts off partway through the discussion, so that that wouldn't be accurate. So, yeah, okay, I would be fine with further review when they come in. Carol, do you have anything?
Nope, I'm
Okay, so we'll call this item for further review and
The only other point of order I would say there, since we aren't reaching an adjustment to the to the agenda and moving an item, my suggestion is that the board make a motion, second motion.
Okay.
Vote on it, that way it is an action that's
Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
Yes, Director David Anderson makes a motion that they're concerned regarding consent agenda twenty-two oh sixty-two minutes of December thirteen, twenty twenty-one, be put on the agenda for the school board to address as soon as the secretary is able to confirm the accuracy of the paragraph in question.
Okay, I don't really remember all that, but
All right, it's recorded.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there a second?
Sir.
Okay. And we kind of just discussed it, but is there any further discussion on that? Okay, all right, we will now Yep, all proceed with the vote, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say no. Okay, and and the motion passes unanimously. Okay. We'll now go to individual action item number twenty-two dash oh six nine, salary agreement for Clover Park school district nonrepresented classified staff. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Anthony, Superintendent Banner, can you speak to this item?
Certainly. Following all agreements with bargain units, the district reviews and updates the salary agreements for comparable non-negotiated staff. This process keeps the nonrepresented staff aligned with both in district and out of district comparable positions and prevents what we call gaps in salaries. This process also supports recruitment and retention of these represented positions. I recommend approval of this action.
Board, are there any questions, comments? Okay, we'll now go to the vote, all those in favor say yes.
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 All those in favor say no. Okay, and the motion passes unanimously. Our, our next individual action item is number twenty-two dash oh seven oh, negotiated agreement between Clover Park School District and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local three oh two. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Anthony, is there a second? I'll second it. Superintendent Banner, can you speak to this item?
Yes, approval of this action is the board's agreement to the three-year contract with the I U O E as negotiated. The district and the I U O E came to a tentative agreement within the parameters set by the board. This tentative agreement was reviewed in summary at executive session on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. The I U O E voted on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to ratify this agreement. The district now brings the agreement to the board for your approval, and I recommend approval of this action.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
Alyssa?
Yes.
For the record, Superintendent Banner, will you please, for those who are on Zoom, describe what the I U O E does and who these, who are, who are employees are, because I believe their service is so important right now, and I appreciate this contract keeping our school district moving forward because of the service that they offer.
Yes, the United, the International Union of Operating Engineers represents our maintenance and operations, our custodial, and our grounds crew. And as they think that those folks get for just last week alone is enormous.
And then if you go ahead and throw in what they've done for two years almost in keeping our schools safe and clean and sanitized, it is Herculean what they've done, and I appreciate the work of all of them, and I also appreciate Lori and her staff for bringing this contract to fruition.
Okay, well now, we're forward with the vote, all those in favor say yes.
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 All those opposed say no. Okay, and the motion passes unanimously. Okay, our next individual action item is twenty-two dash oh seven one, Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School Maximum Allowable Construction Cost Increase. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, moved by Anthony, is there a second? Second, by Carol, Superintendent Banner, can you speak to this?
Yes, the board approved a maximum construction cost for Thomas Middle School, which was exceeded by two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. These overages were due to the additional modular added to the project. These overages were due to the additional modular buildings added to the project and various other delays due to COVID. The original cost of the project was seventy-two million dollars. As per statutes, the district maintained a five percent contingency outside of the guaranteed maximum price to cover any potential overages. That contingency equated to two million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. This overage is less than ten percent of that contingency. The funding for these costs were built into the contingency for this project and reside in the district's capital budget, which cannot be used for other costs or expenditures outside of capital projects. I remind the board that Thomas Middle School was built without going to the local taxpayer for a bond, and this does not change that status. I recommend approval of this action.
All right, are there any questions or comments?
It's always disappointing when we, we miss our projections, and two hundred thousand dollars is, you know, yes, it's way less than the contingency that was set aside, yes, there's contingencies for different things. But, you know, managing our resources is very important. Two hundred thousand dollars is basically two new teachers, so those are things that could help us, so I, I understand, I think what happened here, and I'm disappointed that it happened, that we weren't on top of it, so it's, you know, certainly our citizens are going to be concerned at two hundred thousand dollars, a lot of darn money, and so that's my comment.
I think the only thing I would add to that, Director Wagner, is that the guaranteed maximum price was approved, and after that, the district did come back to the board for approval for the additional modular buildings, because those were added based on the projected increase in housing, I think eighty families. I could be wrong in that number, but I think somewhere around eighty families that are projected to come into the new construction that's on North Fort Lewis. And so the district, while that mark was set, we did come back, and I, and I only say this to clarify for the public, it wasn't just a happenstance. It was something that the board did approve in terms of adding the two modular buildings, which was a significant portion of the cost.
But, but the, but we, we were given a number that we were supposed to be, and we missed it. So, yes, it was, was approved, I, I remember voting for that, I thought it was the right thing to do, because what we're doing, because the base brings in more students, we, we need to be prepared for that. It, it's disappointing when you build a new building and you have to put the modular things in there, but you know what, we did the best we could. I, I know that we tried to do the best estimate that was going to be in the community, and it's not a perfect world, I, I, I totally understand that. But, you know, when, when we set the number, something happened that we missed it, and you know, it, it is what it is, and I just want to let people know that firstly, it's a concern to me, and we just need to keep watching this.
I'll just mention, construction costs have skyrocketed the past two years, I think that that's an important factor to mention, it, it is upsetting when you miss the mark, but, you know, someone in my family is in the middle of building a home, and they started at the start of COVID, and boy, have costs skyrocketed for materials and labor and everything in between, so I don't think anyone could have guessed that that was what was to come, so.
Yeah, I think the, the term miss the mark is a little bit deceptive, and because we set the mark, had we not approved the additional work because of the additional students, then we would have hit our mark or come a lot closer to our mark, so I just don't want the public to think that there was, and this was an instance of poor fiscal management, this district has done an amazing job of fiscal management, which is why we were able to build the building without coming to the voters. And so I do have Director Capital Projects, John Bowman, here today, if there were any other questions regarding this.
Okay, yeah.
Alyssa?
Hold on one second, Carol, sorry.
Okay.
So, so the, you know, if, it's, as the chairman has stated that, you know, building costs have gone up, then if, if that's was the reason, then we should build a city that, that, the bill of materials that shows that cost, that's where, that's where it cost, that's what we missed. We, we don't have anything to see exactly where that two hundred thousand dollar, what was it attributed to?
John, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. School board, so if you recall that
Can you speak into the microphone just so everyone?
So if you recall at the time that COVID actually came upon us, we were already in construction, we were under contract. And so the contractor having to send his people home because the state was still trying to decide what kind of COVID needs were, were going to be set place, what we had to do, that was really new at that time, what was going to be happening, the contractor had to bring somebody on site to actually take temperature of the workers and things like that, just taking you down memory lane a little bit as to what actually happened for COVID at the time. And so fast forward to the time that the modular went through and the coordination of the modular between the contractors that were on site already, plus the manufacturing of the modular, and then the delays that we had from COVID, those alone, that's actually what came up with this cost. The total budget, seventy-two million, we're still way under that. But that's, that's not something that was done at the, at the board level, so two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars out of the two million dollars in contingency out of a fifty-six million dollar project. I, I would have to say with very high expectations that the district did extremely good job of managing this fiscal league.
Thank you. I'll let Carol speak, and then I can come back.
I think it's also important to mention, as we talk modular buildings, we are not talking portables that are temporary, and that will not be in great condition in just a few short years as portables of the past. The other thing is by the very fact that this district knows we're going to, the receiving of kids of J B L M, you know what, instead of putting them in a holding pattern, we are building and we have a facility because of this that makes space available for all the kids that are coming to us. You know, military kids and the transfers and come in and, and we take them and we, we make it work. And I appreciate the fact that they're not going to be, have to spread out, they're going to be in building, they're going to be in a building that is the same quality as Thomas Middle School. And the fact that we are still under budget, didn't go to our public, didn't raise taxes, I don't, I don't think it's a disappointment.
There, further comment? Okay. All right. All right, well now proceed with the vote, all those in favor say yes.
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 All those in favor say no. All right, and the motion passes unanimously. Okay, our next individual action item is number twenty-two dash oh seven two, adoption of policies as listed in the agenda, is there a motion to approve? Okay, moved by Anthony, is there a second?
So moved.
All right, seconded by Carol, Superintendent Banner, can you speak to this item?
Yes, if approved, this action approves the list of policies on the agenda. Policies were reviewed in agenda review prior to the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one board meeting and presented for first reading at that meeting. Per the process, they are now presented to the board for second reading and adoption. I recommend approval of this action.
Are there any questions or comments that are a number of, I'll do here, yes.
I just have a comment, there's all thirty-one, twenty-two, excused and unexcused absences. Thirty-one, twenty-two, excused and unexcused absences. I did bring this up at a gender review, and it would just be of interest to me to know how the current process of attracting unexcused absent students is working. I would suggest that though I am in favor of these policies, that that would be interesting. Information to have.
Yes.
Could we could we maybe schedule a workshop then to talk about that? For Anderson's question.
Would this, yeah, would this be of interest?
And that would be solemnly on the unexcused and excused absence.
The tracking of the current process and how it works versus.
You know, the other thing I, one of my thoughts is, as we, as when I return and we onboard with Mr. With with Director Anderson, we certainly might be able to answer some of those questions. So I would also direct. May maybe it might be easier to have the superintendent. I I'm not, I'm all for having a workshop topic, but if we can also get this answered through that process. I think that would be good also, a good way to look into it.
Okay. All right, we can look into it further at a future workshop.
I would just recommend that it not be limited to just the unexcuse, but possibly we look at the comprehensive way that we monitor and track attendance in the district that has accepted to the board.
Are there any further discussion on the policies? Okay. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those in favor say no? All right, and the motion passes, you know. Last, we'll now go to matters for discussion and our information. The first one is information and discussion for the census data and register, district redistricting boundaries. So Superintendent Banner.
Yes, we have representatives from our legal firm Porter Foster Rourke here to present information on the census and the redistricting process as per the Washington State Voting Rights Act. We have Parker Howell and Christina Widener here on the screen. Parker and Christina, you may unmute, and I will turn over the presentation to you. Board, once you, again, we put this intentionally away from superintendent report so that it was adjacent to your ability to discuss it or your timeframe to discuss it as opposed to having the gap in between. So Parker and Christina, the screen is yours.
All right, thank you. Well, good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Banner. I'm going to go ahead and share our screen here, so bear with me for one moment. You should now see a PowerPoint presentation. If you give me a thumbs up, someone, if you can see that. All right, thank you. Well, it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Again, my name is Parker Howell. I'm a partner with the law firm Porter Foster Rourke, and we advise that a district is outside counsel. With me today is my associate Christina Widener. And we have been asked to participate in advising the district on the issue of redistricting. And when we're using that term, we're talking about the possible redrawing of director district boundaries for voting for members of the board of directors. And we're doing that in conjunction with a consultant by the name of Christopher Melendez, who works for a company called Davis, which is based out of California. And so he's handling the demographics side and interpreting recent twenty-twenty census data. And we're working on advising on the legal side as far as what that process looks like. And so for today, we're going to cover two primary subjects. And these are related issues, although separate and distinct to some degree. So the first thing that we'll be talking about is reviewing options for servicing students who, as it turns out, reside in the Bethel School District, but for some period of years have been served by the Clover Park School District. This is an issue that came to light as the consultant reviewed various county records against other types of records that have been maintained. And it was found that there actually is a pocket of students who are residing on JBLM are technically within the Bethel School District boundary, but nonetheless have been served by the district. So we'll talk about four options for addressing that issue moving forward. Second, we'll review the overall state redistricting process as it applies to the Clover Park School District, as well as talk about implications of the recently passed Washington Voting Rights Act, which is based on the constitutional idea of one person, one vote, and ensuring that any changes to the map of director districts are not infringing on equal protection and are upholding that one-person-one-vote principle. Turning then to the first issue, which is service of this affected area on JBLM. The image on your screen from county mapping data, which I'll highlight here using my laser tool on the screen, there's this area here where you can hopefully see a red dot that is roughly circular. And it's a part of what was formerly McCord Field, now, of course, JBLM. And there are a number of housing units on that property that house something like thirty-four students, I understand, at the current time. And they reside in things like a hotel that's on the military base, I believe, a mobile home facility, and some other types of transitional housing. It's a roughly three point two acre parcel, and it falls entirely within the JBLM boundaries and its military land. It's my understanding that Bethel School District does not have access to JBLM at this time as far as its transportation is concerned. And for that and likely other reasons, the district, as in the Clover Park School District, has been serving those students, given that you do provide educational services to most of the students who are residing on the base. We can see this discrepancy then on the next slide, which is a overlay provided by the consultant of where the district's boundary is and where the Bethel boundary is. So again, to highlight this using the laser pointer, the area in question is this roughly square area that is shown as purple, shaded purple, but with the red boundary around it. And as you can see, that area is part of Bethel School District technically, but is adjacent to that northeast side of the district boundary. This area is an issue for a variety of reasons. First of all, as as we'll talk about further in just a moment, anytime that there is a change in the overall district boundaries, that can trigger an additional redrawing of the director district lines. And because the district is going to be required to do redistricting under state law following the ten-year census data anyway, it's advisable to handle any of that redistricting that could be required at the same time, necessitating making a determination at the outset about how to address this particular parcel. In addition, as a matter of state law, it's important that, you know, students are either attending the district that they reside in, which they have a right to do, or that there's another lawful mechanism for having those students attend a different district. In talking with district administration, we've identified four different options for addressing this issue. The first of those is the concept of non-resident enrollment. And that's a function of state law that allows the student who resides in one district, in this case Bethel, to seek a waiver that in many cases must be granted by that resident district to then attend a different district. And that can be based on a variety of circumstances, such as a safety or health condition or a special hardship or detrimental condition. So in this case, part of the reason for parents having the ability to seek a waiver out of the Bethel School District and into the Clover Park School District could be that there's no ready access on the northeast side of JBLM that would allow those parents to, for example, transport their students over into Bethel. Similarly difficult possibly for Bethel to transport the students using its transportation. There are downsides to that approach, though, including that students and their parents must actually take the affirmative step of requesting that release each school year. So that would be a process that requires a lot of communication and follow-up with all of the parents of the students who reside in this housing, a portion of which is transitional. And it would be relying on parents to take that step. An additional option would be to pursue an inter-district cooperation program or a form of inter-local agreement between Clover Park and Bethel. And there are really two options or sub-options there. The first is that the district could pursue setting up a program that would serve Bethel students who are residing within JBLM within the Clover Park School System. There are only limited purposes for which those agreements are allowed, however, such as providing educational programs that would not otherwise be available, avoiding unnecessary duplication of services, and providing for racial balance within and among school districts. And it's not immediately clear that any of those requirements for that type of inter-local agreement would be met here. Another subtype of this option that could be pursued would be to have an agreement between the districts for Clover Park to just transport students from that area to the Bethel School District. That is a different portion of state law that would be relied upon, and it would basically just be a contract for those transportation services. A third option would be to have service for the students residing within this area be handled by Bethel, given they are students who are technically residing in that other district. That would then require access to JBLM by the Bethel School District, and it would result in these, you know, roughly thirty families or thirty students at least no longer attending Clover Park. There would be some amount of impact aid and possibly other state apportionment funds that would accompany those students over into the Bethel School District. The fourth option then is to pursue a transfer of territory from the Bethel School District into the Clover Park School District. And this is actually a fairly complicated process, so I'm going to just provide a high-level summary of what those steps would entail. And the first piece of that would be the district would go about obtaining a legal description of this territory to be transferred so that it's very clear and could be recorded in a document with the county what that description is and how it would affect the district's existing boundary. District administrators would then notify the Bethel School District Board, as well as the registered voters in the territory of the proposed plan to transfer this area. And the Bethel School District Board of Directors would have to have an opportunity to respond to that. The district would hold a public hearing for voters who reside within that affected area. And only once those steps have been done may the Clover Park School District file a petition with the Educational Service District Superintendent to ask that this transfer of land take place. There are several steps in this process that the Board of Directors has to be directly involved in. And one of those is that only really the board can file that petition with the ESD, and you have to have a majority of the board sign the petition. I will say that in this particular case, I understand that Superintendent Banner has reached out to the Superintendent of Bethel to broach this issue, so Bethel is aware of it. And the districts are in the preliminary stages of discussing what that type of a transfer might look like. Once a petition is filed with the Educational Service District, Clover Park School District administrators, along with at least one member of the Board of Directors, would negotiate with a similar group representing Bethel School District to talk about what it would look like and what terms would need to be in place to transfer this territory. And in the event there's an agreement, there would be formal documents drafted that would need to be approved by the Boards of Directors of each school district to transfer this parcel. In the event of a disagreement, there's a dispute resolution process to be followed that can involve optional mediation, followed by potentially a contested hearing in front of what's called the Regional Committee on School District Organization. And that is a body that is organized by the Educational Service District that has various members that would hear the arguments of both districts and make an ultimate determination. Should there be any kind of a transfer, as I mentioned earlier, the district is required to then draft up a plan to redraw the director district lines, which makes sense anytime you have a transfer, because you may be adjusting the population that lives within any one of those director districts. And in this particular case, if there is a transfer of territory, that redistricting must be done within eight months after the transfer. Because this possibility of a transfer exists that would then require within eight months redrawing of the director districts, that then segues into the next topic, which is the fact that the district already needs to be considering the redrawing of those director district lines, one way or another. The consultant has made it clear, Mr. Melendez, that in order to really do the meat of the work of redrawing those director district lines, for the reasons I'll talk about momentarily, it'll be necessary to address this threshold issue in a relatively timely fashion. I'll now move on to discussing just a few considerations as it pertains to transferring the territory. The first is to know that it may take up to several months, even where the school districts agree, underlying that necessity that if this is an issue that's going to be acted upon moving forward with some level of haste. There are going to be some costs for the district in terms of legal fees, consultant fees of creating the survey for the area, as well as contacting the voters who reside within that area in order to provide them adequate notice. There's also the need for a notice in a public hearing, as mentioned earlier, which will add an additional time period to that process. The final thing I would just mention, sometimes there is controversy when one school district seeks to transfer territory into its boundaries, because part of the process that the Educational Service District oversees is adjusting equitably the tax rolls of each district. And so how our property tax is going to be allocated based on the assessed value of the land within those districts. In this particular case, we hope that will not be an issue, given that this is JBLM land. It's owned by the federal government and therefore does not directly contribute to property taxes. There is, I understand, some impact aid that would likely accompany these students from the federal government wherever they end up. Moving then to the second primary issue here, and that is the redistricting process, which involves adjusting those boundaries per federal and state law. And before we dive too deep into that, I want to just talk for a brief moment about the different types of systems that school districts are authorized to use in Washington State for electing their directors. There are really what I would call three different systems that exist. The first is that you can have what's called an at-large system, which is where voters all across the district vote for any candidate, regardless of where they reside. And in some cases, they may be required to reside in a particular director district. Additionally, you can have a true director district system where a candidate must reside within that district and the voters of only that district vote for that candidate. And then third, you could have a hybrid system, such as where the voters of a individual district will vote to elect certain candidates who must also reside within that district. And then there are also a couple of at-large seats that are voted on by the voters across the district. Currently, the district has an at-large system, so that first option, where each director candidate must live within their designated district, but voters across the school district vote in each individual director race. The redistricting is required under Washington State law when a variety of different events happen. And there are two here that are at issue, as we talked about transfer of territory. And then every ten years, when the decennial census data comes out, the school district is required to create a plan in order to redraw those director lines if a imbalance in the population that resides within each of those districts has developed over that ten-year period. And in this case, school districts are essentially required to create those plans, at least the first draft by November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And there are some public participation requirements in this process as well, involving publishing the plan, holding a public meeting, amending it, and then allowing for additional. involving publishing the plan, holding a public meeting, amending it, and then allowing for additional written comments. That is the minimum process that's required, as we'll see here in a little bit more detail on this next slide. School districts also have the option to go beyond that and doing outreach to their community to let them know about this process and solicit input, particularly from racial or language minority groups, who, as we'll see under the Voting Rights Act in a moment, uh may have uh comments that are relevant to the redistricting process. I won't walk through this timeline on the current uh screen in great detail, but uh just to provide a high-level summary, by November fifteenth, the district creates the initial plan. There's a certain time period then for publishing that and then uh certain timeframes for ultimately revising the draft plan, adopting it, and then it will eventually be filed with the county auditor. Now, when we're looking at redistricting, state law establishes several criteria that the district must meet. And the first is that the individual director districts must be as nearly equal in population as possible. So that means when we're looking at the total population of the district, if we carve that up into five segments, uh each director district would ideally have one-fifth of the population. The districts must be as compact as possible, and compact doesn't necessarily mean uh small, it means regular in shape. In other words, not uh drawn uh in a way that doesn't uh keep that uh district looking like it follows a typical pattern or practice for drawing districts. The districts have to be geographically contiguous. In other words, you can't have one bit of uh a given district on one end of the school district and the other part on another. You cannot use population data to favor or disfavor any racial group or political party. And finally, the boundaries have to be based on some existing natural boundaries in communities of related and mutual interest. Overlaid on top of those requirements is what's known as the Washington Voting Rights Act. And that's relatively new legislation that mirrors federal law known as the Voting Rights Act. And both those federal and state laws reflect elements of the federal and state constitutions that set up the one-person-one-vote principle. Under the Washington Voting Rights Act, your election method as a district cannot impair the ability of protected class members to elect the candidates of their choice. And in this case, a protected class means a member of a race, color, or language minority group. And uh language minority groups uh track the federal definition, which is a more limited uh subset of protected classes than we might uh typically see in, for example, the Washington law against discrimination um and includes uh individuals such as uh those who are Alaskan uh natives, uh American Indians, and others. A violation occurs where there's polarized voting, which has a very specific definition, and then members of a protected class do not have equal opportunity to elect the candidates of their choice as a result of dilution or abridgement of voting rights. So this gets into a rather complex test that the federal courts, including the U.S. Supreme Court, have set up. So I'll uh spare you getting into all the details there. Suffice to say that uh polarized voting has to do when different uh uh race or ethnicity groups are proven to vote in different patterns, uh such that if you had a minority group that made up a large part of the voting population of the district and you also had Caucasian voters who are making up the majority of that district, that the uh director districts are uh framed up in such a way that both uh the members of these minority groups are uh voting together but essentially being overpowered by uh the Caucasian voters throughout the district as a whole. Uh, and this gets into the possibility then of changing the boundaries of the director districts as well as possibly making changes to the electoral system as a whole. So anytime that a district notices and assesses its data uh and sees that there's a possible Voting Rights Act violation, it can voluntarily implement remedies. And one of those types of remedies that's new in the law is that you're authorized to implement a district-based electoral system or a combination of at-large and district-based. In other words, a school district can go from being all-at-large voting to each candidate must live in the director district and the voters in that director district only vote for that one candidate rather than all of the races. It's important to know that a voter also has the ability to challenge the district's voting system. So any registered voter residing within the Clover Park School District um can file that type of a challenge to say they believe the standards we just talked about a moment ago are being violated. The uh district then has to work in good faith to see if there's a remedy that could be agreed upon. If it implements a remedy, it seeks a court order to enforce that. And if there's no court order, litigation may follow in which if the person challenging the system ultimately is successful, the district can be required to pay their attorney's fees. So in any school district that's assessing this process, it's important to uh ensure that any redistricting complies with the Voting Rights Act to avoid that type of a challenge. So looking at the current director districts here to conclude uh in the last few slides, we'll look at the specific data that was found following the twenty twenty census that the consultant has begun to analyze based on the demographics. In this case, we see that there are five director districts. As I mentioned, they are at-large voting currently. Uh, Director District Five there in the teal at the southwest corner is a much larger geographic district than any of the others. If we turn then to the uh population, we'll see that uh Director District Five also has uh a larger portion of the population than any of the other director districts. So this table shows each district, the total population within that district. And then at the bottom, we see that the overall population of Clover Park School District as a whole is approximately ninety thousand. The column at the far right shows the variance, and the variance is calculated by taking that ninety thousand number, chopping it into five pieces and saying if you had uh an equal number of the population in each of those director districts, what would that come out to and how much does what's actually happening on the ground vary from that? So in this particular case, if we just divided the population in five parts, we'd have approximately eighteen thousand people in each director district. As it is now, for example, Director District One is six point seven percent less than that eighteen thousand figure, whereas Director District Five is twenty-eight percent more than that figure. So by taking the difference between Director District Four, which is a lot about eleven percent under, to Director District Five, which is about twenty-eight percent over, you get this maximum variance of thirty-nine point one percent. Under federal law, uh as federal court decisions have uh uh announced, you really are limited to having in most cases a ten percent or less variance. And in some cases with a rational reason, a local government can have uh slightly more than ten percent, uh possibly up to like sixteen point four percent. But in this case, as we can see, because there is a thirty-nine point one percent um difference, the recommendation is to go ahead and redraw those district boundaries in order to have a more equal share of the population represented in each of the five districts. An additional step that the directors could consider is whether there's any uh criteria that would require uh or uh militate in favor of going toward that director district-based system instead of having an at-large system. Going to that end, the uh consultant has begun analyzing the census data based on racial or language minority groups that reside within each director district. And we can see here uh some of that population data, for example, Latino uh members of the population make up thirty-one point five percent of Director District One, seventeen point eight percent of Director District Two, and so on and so forth. And that's broken down by all of those uh groups that are protected by the Voting Rights Act, which are also ones that the census uh collects data on. And so further, uh, most likely attorney-client privileged discussions would uh likely uh be warranted here between our office and the district administration, as well as potentially the board uh about the ramifications of the data on that front. Uh, but uh for for your information at this time, it's just important to know that uh there is this overlay that as uh the director district boundaries are redrawn uh in order to comply with the state law based on this ten-year census data, uh it's important that the district ensure that any uh groups uh who are racial or language minorities across the district don't end up having their uh ability to vote for candidates that they identify with diluted or broken up by the redrawing of those uh director district lines. In terms of the next steps, again, the first threshold issue is determine how to serve the students who are residing within JBLM because that will then drive what is the area of the district that can be divvied up into five parts and then create a redistricting plan that makes those five parts of the district as roughly equal as possible uh by November fifteenth, while keeping in mind these Voting Rights Act requirements. So I thank you for uh your time, and I am happy to answer questions uh if there are any. And I will just uh offer the caveat that if some of the topics here may get into attorney-client privileged areas, in which case uh those would be things that we could potentially discuss in an executive session.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh. You have any questions? Yeah.
Um Chair, several questions. First, um, how how did the um the Bethel Clover Park difference? How how did that happen? Is that a mistake somewhere? Who who made that mistake?
And frankly, I don't know the full history of that. What's been conveyed to me was that this issue has been uh one that came up at least once previously, I believe in the early twenty-tens is what was conveyed. I'm not sure exactly what year that was. And it's unclear to me whether that was a decision that was made by one or the other districts or this is one of these areas where the, depending on what map you look at and which county data versus E S D data versus state data, there was a discrepancy where it appeared that the district boundaries of the Clover Park School District included that portion. So I wish I had a better answer for you there, but that's what I know about how it arose at this point.
And then and so then the then the impact, impact aid costs, what what what's the delta difference now going to be?
So I can answer both of those. Well, the first question, and I'll have a great answer, since the census came up and so we were required to look at the uh the data and then uh Data's Demographics, who is the consultant that we use. As they were looking at the data, they saw that particular map, which is how that came to our attention. The twenty-ten piece was not Bethel and so Bethel and Clover Park, that was an issue, I believe. Still looking for it for it or that might have been earlier.
That would that would work twenty-ten before me.
Before, okay, for now, before my time as well. This came to our attention because of the looking at the census data with the Data's Demographics consultant, they brought it to our attention. The uh impact aid is about two thousand dollars per student. So if these thirty-four students went over to, if Bethel kept these students, nothing changed, and those students were going to be in the Bethel School District, then sixty-eight thousand dollars would be what they would uh.
And they're already getting that impact aid.
We are getting that impact aid because we are serving those students.
Okay, yeah, so. Okay. I guess we'll we'll get more on that as we go forward. The 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 next question is, is my understanding is, is when when we change direct areas to direct like we have now to something different, then all of us have to stand for reelection. Is that correct?
That's right. The state law requires that uh all five directors would need to stand for election at the next election. When that election takes place, could differ depending on what time period during the year uh the decision to go to that new director system takes place in. Uh, and it, I can pull that up and provide a little more detail on that if needed.
And I just would mention, if we change the boundaries, that does not make it so we have to go. It's just if we change the method of how people vote.
Uh, I have a question related to that. Uh, how people vote, the current system, a hybrid or a large? Oh, is this the time to determine that?
If the district were to want to entertain moving to a different system, in other in other words, let's say, for example, going from at-large to a director district base, uh it would make the most sense from an efficiency standpoint to make that change as you're already working on this redistricting that is going to be required to occur by November of twenty twenty-two. Otherwise, if you would potentially redistrict by November twenty twenty-two, then make a change to the electoral system and then be required to redistrict again under state law. In other words, uh, there's a requirement to redraw the boundary lines or at least analyze whether they need to be redrawn when you change the electoral system.
A related question, who who meets the determination as to what system we use to vote for district representation?
We.
The Board of Directors.
And I would, I mentioned this in our this first came up, but one concern I have going to uh director, like the voters just being in their director district is, we don't have a high voter turnout in Lakewood. We have a hard enough time, it seems, getting people to vote for directors as a whole. I wish it was higher. We have enough people, uh but it just historically on non-presidential years, it's even lower. And so that would be my concern. How much of a vote would we really get? Probably very minimal. Uh, so that would be my main concern.
So what would be the next steps uh for this entire process? Both for how directors are elected and what to do about that section between Clover Park and Bethel?
So on the uh first issue, the land that is in Bethel School District served by Clover Park, uh the next steps will be getting direction uh on our end from the superintendent and from the board as to which of those four options, whether it's transfer of territory or another method um the district ultimately wants to pursue. If the decision is to see about negotiating a transfer of the territory, it will be going through that process I laid out of notifying the voters, uh providing the adequate notice to the Bethel School District Board and giving them a chance to respond and then working its way through that formal process to transfer, which may take up to a few months, uh even if there's a smooth agreement between the two districts. On the second issue, the matter of the electoral system and redrawing of any uh district boundaries, some legwork can be done on thinking of possible scenarios for redrawing of the map and having the consultant work on that based on his expertise now. But for the most part, he's indicated that he'll really need to know an answer to the boundary question before he can start preparing scenarios. And uh what we'll rely on the consultant for is actually making suggested changes to those uh maps to go block by block in the census data, which is similar to a city block, and say, how could we possibly change the lines so they make sense and they're logical and they follow the Voting Rights Act, but also try to balance out the population? And so that's something that would also then potentially require some input from stakeholders, uh perhaps some uh further uh opportunity for public comment. And I believe it's likely that Superintendent Banner, myself, and um other members of administration will meet to talk further about those next steps at a uh later point in time.
Karen?
Um, Alyssa, you pointed out the fact that sometimes our voting um situations are pretty low. Now, quite frankly, I think your area and my area are the two highest. When you look at voting data and voting data does not um play in to any of this redistricting is from everything I've been told. The reality is, I think, keeping and honoring the director area, even though it's sometimes more difficult, especially for, I know Director Two and I think Director Area Three is sometimes is more difficult, but I think it really makes sure that we have representation from all of our communities. I I've always said this and I I believe it. I I live in a community and I think it would not benefit us to have five parents from one pocket of a community to be to be representing the board. I think as sometimes it's harder to find position, people to run for our positions, but I do think it's, we get a better rep. But I do think it's, we get a better representation serving from all the communities instead of running the possibility of having one or two communities being the only ones represented. And that's just a worry of mine and it always has been. So as we move forward with this, if I, I do look for further discussion. There's a lot of information here and I look forward to taking it apart and looking at it a little closer, but I think we really need to seriously consider making sure that how is the best, what is the best thing that we can do for have representation of as many different communities as possible. And I think honoring our director area election process is probably that way. Why is my?
Just to be clear, under any of those three systems I talked about earlier, the candidate for election would need to reside within the director district. As is the current case.
Okay, so that would change.
I should say unless, actually in two of the three, apologize there for misspeaking. So in two of the three systems at large, a system where it's totally director district based. And then in a hybrid, you could potentially have, let's say, one or two seats or some number of seats that are elected across the district where you could reside anywhere within the district as the candidate. So that would be the one option where you might have individuals who don't reside within the district in which people are voting for them.
But then you could still have a majority of people from, let's say, my neighborhood, we could have, which, which feeds into Huttloff, feeds into Oakbrook, Huttloff Lakes. You could have three parents from those schools representing all the kids of the district. And I think that's kind of a misrepresentation. The other question I have is in District Area Five, where the population is so much greater, does that include JBLM population? Where we know though it's very, very hard, those are, because JBLM parents for the most part, knowing they're going to be here for three, two to three years, they don't register to vote here. So if that's counting the JBLM population, I want to honor them, but for the most part, they are not registered voters.
The pop, the census does just measure the population that fills out the census data. So the census data itself comes from the entirety of JBLM as I've seen it. What I don't know is to what degree does that have a discrepancy with the registered voters on JBLM? Or to what degree did individuals residing on JBLM actually fill out the census? That is an information we have.
Do JBLM, I'm a non-military person, so do military people fill out a census at the base they're residing? Or does they actually fill out census from where they're registered to vote from their home states?
Yeah, that's something we'd have to do some follow-up research on and report back. That's something I know off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation, Parker. I have just one last question. Could you give, and you probably did already, but I missed it. Could you give an example of the Voting Rights of a protected class, how they could be impaired?
Yeah. So the test, this gets into the test that was created by the US Supreme Court for what's voting dilution. And it comes from a case by the name of Gingles. Thornburg beginning goal specifically. And what that, what the Supreme Court said in that case was that you have to look at three factors to determine whether there is a violation taking place. The first factor is whether the minority group is sufficiently large and geographically compact to constitute a majority in a single member district. The second factor is whether the minority group is politically cohesive, in other words, tends to vote as a block. And the third factor is whether the majority votes sufficiently as a block to enable it in the absence of special circumstances, usually to defeat the minority's preferred candidate. So courts looked through those three factors and then they turned to nine other factors that were appearing in a Senate report when the US Senate passed this legislation that looks at things such as, for example, is there evidence that political campaigns have been characterized by overt or subtle racial appeals? Or for example, have minority groups, members of minority groups actually been elected to public office in the jurisdiction? So courts go through this three factor test and then they look at evidence of these nine factors and then they ultimately decide under a totality of the circumstances test. Is there a dilution of the minority voting strength taking place? And so just to give a very simple example, let's say you had a director district and that director district was fifty-one percent Latino and it was forty-nine percent Caucasian. That would meet that first factor as the courts have approached it as to whether the minority group is sufficiently large and geographically compact to constitute a majority in a single member district. Then the next inquiry the court would have to do is again, we're assuming there were fifty-one percent Latino voters. Do they vote sufficiently as a block? And it gets into some legal tests about how that works. And then third, in the absence of special circumstances, would the white voters typically vote in such a way that it defeats this candidate that was preferred by this Latino voting group that again was fifty-one percent in that particular district? So it gets into a very complicated test that often relies on evidence, testimony from experts. And there, the three sort of common buzzwords that you may hear around this moving forward are cracking, stacking, and there's a third one that's escaping me at the moment. And essentially this has to do with things such as redrawing the lines impermissibly in such a way that you break up where minority group, you take a community and draw a line to the middle of it. Stacking is where you have a white population that's added to a minority population so that the white population now balances them. And you can also run into a few other situations. So essentially is what a district, any district wants to keep in mind is making sure it's redrawing the boundaries of a director district in such a way to avoid allegations of any of those types of practices.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And it's important, we also hire consultants because it's complicated. It's complicated business. So this is a good place for consultants to, to help us out. Is there any further comments or are we ready to?
Can I ask one question, Alyssa?
Yes.
And, and this will be for further discussion, which is what this topic is. I kind of was on the understanding that the children, like those thirty-four families or so are actually waiting for permanent housing because that area is not really considered a permanent housing for military families. And that in fact, if they are waiting for permanent housing on base, doesn't that generally mean they will be CPSD families? As they move on base, that's who we have.
It could be that they are in transition. However, when they are, wherever they are, that is their school district. Wherever they fall on the map, I know that sounds kind of very clinical and sterile, but that's where they fall and that's where they're served.
It doesn't matter.
Right.
No, I, I, and I, I understand that part. I just didn't know if JBLM was working with us to work with those families with the understanding of about getting the variance. And I understand it's annual. There's just so many issues there that I just didn't know where the JBLM was, was in working with those families as they're waiting for permanent housing.
I'm certain that as we dive into the details of the families that live there and, you know, the, the transition housing that we will start to have those discussions. And that's the next steps when Parker and myself and several other folks from my admin team get together.
Okay, because I just also hate to see children. We know that stability for all children is important and as if they, if they're bounced around from districts from that transition time, that's not good for them either. So good luck Superintendent Banner and figuring out that one.
Okay. And thank you so much. So let's say good night to you all, Alyssa.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Parker. Thank you, Christina.
All right. The next matter for discussion is the Clover Park High School mascot.
It's just prior to your discussion, I wanted to make sure that you had the comprehensive review. This is the same information that the board has been receiving since, I think, August sixth was our first reach out to the board on this process. And so I will bring to the screen Assistant Superintendent Kevin Nikada and I believe Director of Marketing and Communications, Leanna Albrecht.
Good morning, Board of Directors. President Anderson Pearson, Superintendent Banner. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you an update on the district action regarding Substitute House Bill thirteen fifty-six, which prohibits inappropriate Native American names, symbols and imagery in public schools. Similarly to our presentation at the November twenty-second workshop, I'll give you a brief update on those efforts and Leanna Albrecht, Director of Marketing and Communications will review the Clover Park School mascot naming process. House Bill thirteen fifty-six was signed into law in May two thousand twenty-one. And there are four key components to it. Primarily, it prohibits the inappropriate use of Native American names, symbols and images as public school mascots, logos or team names. It also establishes exceptions if certain requirements are met, including tribal consultation and authorization. It allows for phasing out uniforms or other materials if specific requirements are met. And it creates a grant program administered by the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, to provide grants to school districts to support schools that incur cost as a result of compliance with this act. As a review of the district's process and timeline, legislation was passed in May of two thousand twenty-one. That month, Superintendent Banner convened a committee to review mask, school mascots and imagery in alignment with the new legislation. The committee consulted with OSPI to determine the primary tribe to consult with. We then consulted with the Pialt Tribe of Indians who provided a written response. The committee further engaged Native American staff, students and families and developed a recommendation for the superintendent. We provided an update to the board on November twenty-second and Clover Park High School began its mascot renaming process. The district engaged in additional consultation with the Pialt Tribe in December. A component of this process was to engage with our local tribe. We reached out again through OSPI to determine that the Pialt Indian Tribe would be the consulting tribe. We then reached out and received a written response. As part of this response, they provided examples of school names, mascots and imagery they identified as disrespectful, harmful and stereotypical. These items were from the list that were identified at Clover Park. The mascot.
Wanted to be the tissue running. Sorry.
The mascot named Warriors, fictional Native American person, person faces and depictions of Native American style art by non-native artists. The tribe also provided resources that were viewed by the committee. Additionally, additional consultation with the tribe after the committee developed its recommendation provided the following response. The tribe agreed the mask warrior mascot is too deeply tied to a history of harmful stereotypes to warrant a simple change of imagery. The tribe stands by original, its original July twenty-two thousand twenty-one response that lists warriors as a mascot the tribe does not condone stating. While the word warrior is not inherently tied to Native American cultures and communities, its use as a mascot across US schools is deeply tied to racist and stereotypical representations of Native American people and communities. This connection will take generations to undo. They also stated the tribal community members of CPSD have shared their negative experiences with the mascot and their relief and excitement for the change. The committee recommendation was shared with the board on November and is displayed here. After reviewing the legislation, consulting with the tribe and consulting with Native American staff, students and families, it was clear to the community committee that it was not feasible to keep the mascot name and change the imagery. The committee recommended the district begin a process to remove the inappropriate images, symbols, logos, names and mascots of Native Americans at Clover Park High School. An important question had been asked by the board alumni and community members regarding whether the school can continue to use a mascot named Warrior and replace the Native American imagery with something else. As mentioned, this was discussed with the committee. Native American imagery has been associated with Clover Park High School, High School mascot throughout the school's history over seventy years. Although the name warrior is not specifically only to Native American cultures, it has been associated with the Clover Park School community and can't be easily disassociated from the Native American imagery. Importantly, consultation with the tribe, Pialt Tribe of Indians confirms that the tribe finds the name warrior disrespectful, harmful and stereotypical and is too deeply tied to the history of harmful stereotypes to warrant a simple change of imagery. The district also sought legal action regarding this issue. And they stated and advised that the name that the use of the name, if one of the tribes has already communicated that is not advisable to not use.
And I'll provide just a brief update regarding the Clover Park High School mascot process. So in November, Clover Park High School moved forward with the process to identify a new school mascot. After the committee completed its recommendation on this topic, the school has worked to identify a mascot name prior to December thirty-first per Substitute House Bill thirteen fifty-six, which allows school districts to continue using their current uniforms and items with the old mascot name and imagery this school year while they transition to the new mascot name if they identify the new mascot by the deadline. So the school worked with current staff and students, including families, to identify a list of potential names for broader alumni and community input. Now, due to the timeline, this was a more student and school centered process versus a broader community input process at the name generation phase. In December, the school then presented four names for alumni and community input. And that was Dragons, Grizzlies, Mustangs and Timberwolves. After they received the alumni and community input, the school then gathered additional input from students on the top four suggested names. A school committee reviewed all input from both the community and the school and identified its top mascot name in December. The school is expected to share the name with the school and community in January. So once the mascot name is finalized, the school will work to create the visual representation of the mascot name. And this will be used for our spring graduation materials and also for uniforms and equipment that will be ordered for fall sports. And for next year, the school will also work to remove all offensive Native American imagery by the end of the school year. And that concludes our update.
Thank you so much for this reflection on this information. We'll now go to discussion.
I have three questions. Is it too late to submit a name?
The school has gone through that process and made a selection.
Second question is is tribal history taught in our school district?
At this time, there are components, but not any specific dark, there are components of that type.
And then finally, is it possible to get a copy of the correspondence between the school district and the tribes?
Yes.
Kevin, you can submit any of that to me. I know that Director Anderson, you probably haven't had, just because you just came on the luxury of the ongoing updates. And so we'll work that through my office.
I think the, the main reason why we wanted to discuss this further, obviously we saw the community input, there's strong, strong thoughts on both sides of the issue. Thoughts on both sides of the issue and. And. I think it's important to take into account all of them. I think that just speaking candidly, my concern was probably the names chosen, which is, you know. That's what I saw the most input from. It seemed like I'm okay with the name change, but. I'm not thrilled with the choices that we had, but it is important to note that we have a process. And it was followed. And usually the school board does not get involved in the name mascot naming, but this one's controversial. So of course. Here we are. There's no doubt that Warriors was, I mean, it's tied to the Native American imagery. That was what it was in our school. And it's also a very valid point that Warriors means a lot of other things in the community. Warrior could be used in numerous ways. But we also have to be sensitive. So it's a tough spot to be in and I know a lot of school districts are in the same position. But I certainly, I mean, we've consulted with the tribe. We've got a very clear answer from them. There's also, I mean, the law, and if you don't. Follow it, you don't set yourself up very well. So.
I know right after your presentation. We have a discussion of hosting a forum. So perhaps all we.
Why don't we just bring that in? We're talking about it now. Let's just bring it in.
Well, this might be a proper place then to make emotion. Director David Anderson moves that the district host a forum, public forum. As soon as time allows to provide both presenters of the tribes and the public. To speak out on this matter of Clover Park mascot in House Bill thirteen fifty-six.
Can discuss that specific motion.
So I think a forum. Is not an attempt at all. I'll make that clear to somehow circumvent the law. We have House Bill thirteen fifty-six that has already been indicated as the law to follow. This is not about that. The idea behind a forum is in keeping with the standard operating procedures. That the state that state that the board will emphasize planning, policymaking and especially here, public relations. I think a public forum would be in keeping with the National District Administration publication. That on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one recommended that such forums allow. For quote establishing a process for respectful evidence-based exchange of ideas, supporting. Public engagement and demonstrating democracy in action.
Carol, do you have a comment? I can't tell.
Yeah, I can't. Okay, here's some of the questions I have and 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 before we went to this thing, I was hoping I could also. Make a statement and I so what we have to address this motion. I think what we have to ask ourselves, because this is the law, this is a legislative acted voted on law. Having a forum, what outcome are we looking for? Or I appreciate you saying because we can't change the law. We're going to abide by the law. And so what 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 outcomes are we looking for now to have people have a venue to, you know. What I'm hoping is that all the people who are angry with the school board changing the mascot will also. Write a letter to the senator. They need to go to the legislators who made this happen. We are following the law. Now, so the outcome that we're looking for, is this just for community information? Is this just to say to the people, we hear you, but we can't do anything about it? I just have some concerns without knowing what outcome are we looking for and what action are we willing to take?
To answer Carol's question, yes and yes. It is about communication and it is about information. And anything we can do as a school board to put the public back in public education apart from surveys. And as I mentioned before, it's not about following the law. That's that's not my point. It is about reaching out to the public in yet another venue that brings the actual physical presence of the tribal members to the table. And representatives that we've heard from in the community that would like to honor. Native Americans at graduation. I think they have a legitimate place at the table. Right now. Those voices in my opinion are not being heard like they might be.
Thank you. I'll just mention my concern with having a forum is that it would seemingly undo the work that we, in my opinion. That we've done up to this point. You know, in January, they were supposed to announce the new name. If we go to a forum, it makes it seem like we're going back to the drawing board. And coming up with new names and starting the process over. That that is my concern. I don't disagree. I that. More avenues for public comment are important. I'm not sure. This specific moment in time is is appropriate just because. As Carol said, I'm not really sure the outcome. If we start, if we do that, it seems like we're starting it over and we're coming up with new options. And, you know, we already honestly passed the deadline. We know that and we need to get moving and make a decision.
Carol said something about, well, you can't change the law. Well, that's not true. Laws can be changed. And the bottom line is, is we're not the ultimate deciders here as a board for what happens in this district. You know, we work for we the people, the people of our community. Are our boss. And that's they've chosen us to be here to look at these issues and go what's going on. Certainly there's some consequences. We have people who elected to make decisions and people of the federal government that have made decisions. Then there's a whole lot of folks in our community don't agree with. And so how do we have that discussion, open discussion? And show people that, okay, you know, we don't like what's going on here. So do we change it? Can we change it? And if you don't have the discussion, you don't know. And so I think this is a worthy effort and. We should hear from our fellow citizens and see where we want to go.
I think what Paul just said is different than what David just said in that, yes, I understand we can change laws. But I also understand we've got some timeline here of dates that we have to have things taken care of and our business done. So that the OSPI department will continue to help with with the reimagining, with uniforms, all the stuff that goes on. I really think. You know, I don't think. That we're going to be able to undo this law in a timely enough manner, if that's what you're proposing, Paul. I don't, I just don't see that happening. I don't see that. I really want, you know, I have, my son's a warrior. He still says he's a warrior. Believe me, I'm hearing all the time for him. Mom, you're not gonna let that happen. Well, guess what, guys? I didn't write the laws. We voted people into office who made this law. So. I think it's Pollyanna is to to kind of think, oh, we can just get it undone in the timely enough manner. That it's not going to cost our taxpayers much more money in funding of Clover Park High School, reimagining, rehandling, things like that. They, I thought there was a piece in there saying that this also could, we could lose funding. If we don't comply with the law in a timely manner. Am I correct on that?
Potentially we could.
Okay, so thank you, Kevin, on that. Until I hear our city, part of our forum is not about which citizens are going to help us fund this school district if we lose our funding. I don't see it happening.
I'll see this one more time. This is not about challenging the law. This is David speaking. This is about an opportunity to expand our reach to the public. And letting them hear from the tribes themselves at the table, a panel discussion. A fellow that would like to honor Native Americans, the opportunity to install tribal history in our schools. Those are the reasons, no other.
David, I acknowledge that. I really, I hope you heard me. I acknowledge that you did not ask for that. I was concerned that Paul asked for that. And said, we could change the law. So I want to make sure those are two separate things. I appreciate what you said, Dave, and I acknowledge that that's not what you're asking for.
So the motion on the table is to host a forum regarding the Clover Park High School mascot and House Bill thirteen fifty-six. So if there's no further discussion, we can go to a vote. Carmen, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Director Paul Watson?
Yeah.
Director David Anderson?
Yes.
I would say. I would say no, since we've already been there and and we're already making a transition for it. So I feel that. I mean, the community has heard it. It's actually been in my inbox as well from the community. And I just don't know if there's anything else we could do at this point. I mean, it's always fantastic to have the community here. And to have their voice and I love the forum idea, but I just don't know if this is going to go anywhere. Except to, you know, continue to generate more communication, which is always good, but. At the end results, what are our real results? I would say no.
Make sure. I want to, before I make my vote, I'm all about having more public, more public input, having some forums. I look forward to them. I voting no on this one because I do not think that's the outcome. We have not heard what the outcome that we're looking for. Will have any relevant value to what the legislation and the law has stated we must do.
And then President Anderson. I am voting no as well because of the timeframe mainly. I'm definitely open to different forums in the future, but. I am voting no on this one. And so the motion. Three yes, or excuse me, two yes, three no. Yeah, so the. To host the forum regarding the Clover Park High School mascot and House Bill thirteen fifty-six. Okay. The next matter of discussion is the school discipline report and placing element reports to. Regular agenda as soon as prepared and Director Anderson, I will let you speak to this and this was your request.
Director David Anderson moves that the school board have on the regular agenda as soon as time for relevant reports are prepared, the subject of school.
And then we are open to discussion now. So go ahead, Director Anderson.
Statistics provided by the district number one state that since two thousand seventeen, there were one thousand sixty-three pages. Each with thirty-four offenses per page for a total of thirty-six thousand one hundred and forty-two offenses. Which averages to fifty-nine per day. Categories number two. Of those offenses range from assault, weapons, drugs, arson, theft, communicating threats, sexual harassment. Violence with injury, bullying and intimidation to defiance of school authority, disruptive behavior. Cellular phones, truancy and vandalism. Finally, number three, the comprehensive report requested of the superintendent should factor in the termination of zero tolerance policy. And its replacement of restored justice.
Comments? So, yep, go ahead.
I'll give you a little more comment on that. I mean, we just got in our email this week. We have a student stabbed in the neck in Clover Park High School. So there's there's stuff going. There's obviously some problems going out there with this whole disciplinist. And I think, you know, when you come to it. The way you change behavior, in my opinion, is that you need to hold people accountable. And so there's things that aren't going the way they should. And I get concerned that our staff. Maybe in a situation where they're afraid to hold people accountable. And so we need to look at those numbers. We need to see what we're going to do and, you know, talk about listening sessions. We probably don't have our staff in here and tell us what's really going on.
Just for a point of clarification, the stabbing in the neck was not in our, that was, that was not in the email and it was not a stabbing to the neck. So.
I mean. I don't want to diminish the severity of the incident, but I just don't want incorrect information. I believe it was the shoulder blade.
And that information was not in our email. So I just wanted to clarify that. We did know of the incident, but we did not know. What was. So I just wanted to clarify that. And just for a point of clarity, we're looking for this for a workshop topic. Okay, because it says as soon as reports are. Prepared, but as time allows for a workshop. Okay.
As you discuss, I would just like to entertain the thought that. The information you're seeking should be coupled with the state's new discipline requirements. What I perceived, which may not be what was intended, but what I perceived was that the superintendent has said. Take away the zero tolerance. And I want to make sure that there you understand as a board, there are also state regulations that require. School districts to act in certain capacities with certain procedures and those took effect. Brian Alba can help me because he's my superstar, but I believe it was twenty, end of twenty seventeen eighteen school year. And they have morphed a little bit since then, but that was kind of moving for implementation right around twenty nineteen. Eighteen nineteen school year. So there are things that have changed that are required by statute. And so if we're going to look at that, I would recommend to the board that we look at a comprehensive understanding of the changes over time. And what school districts have. Are now mandated to do, agree or not. So.
That would probably go under the relevant report. So the motion is still as I would say.
I would also want you guys as a board to clarify because every decision you make is the is my work. And so clarify if we're talking about monthly reports or are we talking about a workshop for the board?
Well, in my opinion, it would be initially a workshop, but. And we've had this discussion and it's below the line, I realize for board directors to say. How it should be fixed, but just to say we have a problem that needs to be fixed. And the numbers here. Were the public to know, which now they will. These numbers are just way, way off the charts. Fifty-nine offenses per day. That to me is intolerable. And the whole reason I'm raising this issue is how can we teach? If the numbers indicate that disruptions are so high. That I think needs to be answered. Not the what. I mean, not the how, what's going on here?
I'd just like to add, and I I don't have the numbers in front of me. I'm, you know, but when I just take the numbers that you described, fifty-nine per day. That's two per school per day. Understand that two per school per day and an incident could be as extreme as what I emailed to you last week. To as minimal as disruption in class. So it's important that when we talk about the numbers, we actually break them down into categories to look at what is the severity of a number. I could have three. I don't want to do that. And those could be written up. I'm not being extreme right now. Typically that shouldn't give us a discipline referral. But it could be something that's minor and it could be three minors throughout. The entire school issue. So when you talk as a former principal, if I could get two per day in my building. And depending on the severity of them. I would rather have zero, but I just want to make sure that we don't just use numbers to spark passion.
I just have been here for two board sessions. But I know in the brief history of reviewing the school board, recall that there was never a report. To the school board on disciplinary issues in school. So maybe it's not an issue.
Yeah, I know. I'm happy to uh. I'm governed by the school board. So whatever you guys say, I just want to make sure that I'm very clear as to what you're asking for. And just, I don't like to leave dangling participle's out there. I, I quote unquote, I, I'd like to just make sure that. Uh, the focus of a request or the evidence of that focus is clarified, classified, just so that. You know, that is, you know, you think fifty-nine, big number, divide that by the twenty-seven sites that we have.
Okay, if there is no further comments, we will. Move to a vote to. Well, I don't want to change your options. So school, uh, have the school discipline report. And placing relevant reports to your regular agenda as soon as prepared.
Alyssa? Yes. I really think we need to have a real discussion. I've got two things, a real discussion on. What type of reports are we talking? Are we talking about two little boys who push in the playground? Or I mean, like Ron says, for that many, uh, you know, I, I, I want civility. I want our kids to come to school safe. I want our parents know. Our kids are coming to school and we're going to make sure your child is safe and comes back home to you. That's so important. But I also think we need to have a real conversation as to what, what, what defines discipline. Are we talking about, you know, the little boy shoving on the playground? Well, that's a discipline note. Well, that's been happening since. School started. So I think we need to have a clear conversation as to what is the whole range? Of what just, what a child gets, gets written up on a discipline note for. And I think it's important to study that. I also think it's to note that we do in fact have. I believe part of the super density valuation incidents, reports that come to us. So that is another, another venue that we do that. So it's not like we never have this information. The other thing, and this is a clarification. So yes, we're taking a vote on this. Um, you know, this is kind of the first time we've had a conversation about this. Are we voting to do what this is suggested as opposed to. Voting to have a discussion. Cause when I think of matters for discussion, I don't see those as individual actions where we, where we do definitely vote on. I like the idea of discussion. I'm all for it.
Yep.
I'm just not, I'm just, I'm, I'm surprised that we're taking individual votes on each one of these issues. It doesn't seem to be the right place.
Historically, we don't. But when a motion is made, it's a, it's a vote.
So we have to do, so, so we have to add these votes, even though going through a gender review and it's, it doesn't become. So what's the difference between a vote on this as opposed to a vote on individual actions?
We're voting to ask the superintendent. To put these reports for a future workshop.
So we're voting on workshop topics?
Yes.
As opposed to just?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where I, I guess from my perspective, I'd like to have the clarity if the outcome of this is to. Create a workshop topic for the board to be educated and engage in discussion. Or is this for having something on like the consent agenda, like the waiver release report, right? That's something we do every month and I want to make sure that. Asked to be so that I can accomplish what's being asked. Option A. A workshop.
I just think, you know, I.
Comprehensive, yeah.
This'll, to vote yes, to have it move to a discussion where we have that is one thing. To vote yes, to put more action. Onto the superintendent without having the information as to what data are we really looking for to me does not seem prudent. Cause all we're doing is assigning the superintendent to do a little bit more work if in fact we're voting. For him to produce something other, you know, change, to change something.
I think in your standard operating procedures, uh, the board. Directors request, which may require considerable time or have political implications are to be directed to the superintendent and board president. There must be a voice of three to request to move forward. I don't know if that voice three just has to be a consensus. Or an actual motion and a vote. Um, either way, the voice of the board would directly into that direction.
No, it does not have to be a formal vote, but when a motion is made. We have to vote on it and it was seconded. So we have to vote on it. That's. The situation.
I understand that, but I'm just gonna, I'm going to do a little cookback. Why are we doing this formal vote as opposed to. A getting a voice of three and asking the superintendent to please make a conversation, make a discussion.
Director Anderson, speak to that.
Comes out the same place. I read a motion. We need a vote.
I know.
The formality, that's what he's saying if I'm hearing you correctly. Okay, Director Paul.
Director Anderson, uh, just wanted to follow up on your request. Uh, if we do have this workshop, what would be, uh, do you want to know more about the discipline of how we handle for the students? And where, where, where they get the help? Is that, is that correct then?
Yes.
And then Director Anderson, do you believe that there needs to be more discipline within the school system itself for the actions that are happening with the students?
But at this point, I don't think it matters. What I believe that matters that I read a motion that we have a discussion. Comprehensive, clear on the subject of discipline in the Clover Park School District. Is it working? Is it disrupting the classroom? Is learning taking place? What are the issues that constitute the definition of discipline? What does the zero tolerance policy that has been mandated by the legislature? Uh, how has that affected if it has? This will, that, that whole subject of discipline requires a workshop.
Okay, so we're voting. On the workshop essentially. But to make it formal, once again, we're voting on the school discipline reports and placing relevant reports to regular agenda as soon as prepared, which we have further discussed. It will be a. Workshop item. In the future as time allows. So Carmen, would you like to do it? Okay, I'll call for this one.
Director Paul Wagner?
Hey.
Director David Anderson?
Yes.
Director Anthony Bledsoe?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm so, I'm so used to going down the line.
President Alyssa.
No, go ahead, the girl, sorry.
Director, forgot to, Carol Jacobs?
I'm voting yes to have the superintendent create a discussion for us on discipline. Yes.
And then President Alyssa Anderson. Yes. Okay, so we have five yes. Yes, so the motion um for this will discipline reports for workshop. Okay, the next discussion item is. Um, for future board meetings in person and or virtual. This was one that I had placed on here. I think it's an important topic. To chat about, um, because. You know, it's a hot topic right now. I want. Um. I, I want to make it clear that at this moment in time, the governor's executive orders requires meetings to be virtual. It is an option for each school district, whether or not they want to be in person. So you will open it up for discussion. Yes.
Director David Anderson moves that school board meetings be held hybrid. Certainly.
Okay, we will take it to discussion now. Yes.
So what has happened here tonight is outstanding. It might, we're face to face. There's body language. We can see one another. Girl on the screen, people in the room. Uh, they step up to the microphone. It's, it's public relations. Exhibit A. We communicate best face to face. There is no other medium that expresses the nuances of communication better. Than face to face interactions. Body language is a huge factor in communication. Postures, gestures. Facial expressions, eye movements. It's all right here, much more difficult. Virtual only. In person is freer from distractions. People. Are not going anywhere. When you're in an in-person event, you are one hundred percent focused on what's happening in the room. And thirdly, and last, it's about messaging. Superintendents and their administrations and school boards should hold more town. Style. Be how uh town hostile meetings in order to allow the public to speak out on contentious issues best. Basically.
Okay. Um, I wouldn't disagree that in person is. Has its benefits. Uh, I think. This meeting has gone well. Um, that's not, that hasn't always been the case in in-person meetings. Take COVID aside, right? I thought I could champion. Think myself, you know, get enough of that with small children, but you know, it, it's not that I'm, that is my determining factor. My determining factor is can people be. Can the community be civil while in this room? And. Tonight has gone wonderfully. That has not been the case the past couple meetings. And so it is difficult. Sometimes when you're trying, when the board's trying to hold a meeting of the board and. The community is not, after public comment is over or that, you know, they don't follow three minutes or they're shouting out. Um, it's very distracting for the meeting and you know, that is my concern. So I would say I'm not opposed to being in person. But if those actions happen in the future, that's not to say that I would. Not vote to move it back to virtual because that is not a healthy environment, in my opinion. Kara?
You know what, Dave? I agree with you. I'm all about in-person meetings. We lose a lot. The disconnect was great when we couldn't. I'm also about, let's just talk the COVID thing. We have to follow safety and health issues. And if we have to go back remote, we do. Um, civility is huge in our district and we've always had. Our board meetings, for the most part, have always been up until late, civil, appropriate, respectful, polite. And, and meaningful. And I know that we will be, we will, this has been a very good meeting, even though I do appreciate, and I do appreciate being able to be. With you, even though I am away. So when, as we can, yes, we should be live. Absolutely. Until we can't. Then we will.
I, I like the idea of hybrid, uh, having options or is always important. I think when we're talking with general. Uh, citizens in our community. So having, having options is, is always good. Uh, I'm myself more of an in-person. Uh, I would much prefer to have any meeting. Um, I do, I have to do a lot of phone call meetings myself and uh. Quite frankly, I think there's a lot more that can get done with uh building relationships in person. So that's always fantastic. But we are in the middle of a pandemic still with fighting off COVID. And I definitely want to be sensitive on that topic too, uh, just for everybody's well-being and their own personal health. So I think as long as we can continue to follow the rules and regulations and what the state has put in as law. Then we should be good to move forward. Um, another good idea always is, uh, perhaps we could, you know, maybe see a virtual and then. Uh, hybrid, virtual and hybrid. Uh, that's always an option too to see. Um, but we'll, we'll see what happens.
So no bearing on how you vote. Uh, I, as the secretary will fulfill whatever your vote is in terms of being the secretary of these meetings. I will however, say that I served two roles. I served the secretary to the board and I served the CEO to the school district. And at this time, as you can look around the room, you do not see any of my council members. And I will continue as long as the data suggests that contagion is high to ask my council members to serve through the screen. Um, and again, this is because we are running out of people. Uh, and even when we're down, hopefully for a week, if we can get the new CDC to be solidified, then we're looking at most likely five days of. Isolation as opposed to ten, um, but there's some discrepancy there. Um, but again, from my perspective as leader of the school district, I need to make sure that these council members are. Stay healthy, not only because they're doing their job here, but because they're also substituting in schools where we can't fill a, a, a position. And so I would continue along that path and I just say that only to be straightforward with the board as you uh make your decision.
All right, so at this time we will vote. They have, sorry. In-person meetings. At this time, it would be, would be more. Yes, hybrid. I was thinking that's staying here, but yes, hybrid. So in person and in virtual. And Carmen, can you do a roll call? Yes, um, Director Paul Wagner?
Yeah.
Director David Anderson?
Yes.
Director Anthony Bledsoe?
Yes.
Director Carol Jacobs? You're muted. You're muted.
I'm muted. I'm muted half the time, not the other. Yes.
And then President Alyssa Anderson.
Yes. Okay, so that is five yes and zero no's. Okay, so. The motion to have future board meetings in hybrid. Format. Okay, and the next item for discussion is posting recordings from uh the board meetings on the internet. This is one that I have presented to be placed as well due to, uh, you know, we've seen comments on it. I personally have. Been for it for um a while now. Um, that wasn't always the case. With the board as a whole. Um, with the virtual environment, it's being recorded. We're here. People are doing public information requests. Um, and so I just thought it'd be a good topic to discuss because it seems like a fairly simple change with a very positive impact. So if anyone else.
Excellent idea.
Yeah.
I certainly support this position and I, I think it's good, but I think we ought to talk about some of the administrative issues that you have doing this. First off, where do you store all this stuff? And who pays for it? Uh, there, there's a cost and then, and then who, who maintains it? I mean, it's nice to have file folders, everything in it, you know, and we do this electronically today. Um, but somebody has to manage that. Uh, so there is a cost to us, but then once we do it. There's going to be an expectation by, uh, we, the people or citizens, they, they want to be able to get to it. And so, you know, how, how do they get access? So all of those things need to be thought through. Because they're hard. Um, you know, I said on the last board, we talked a lot about this. Just looking at the cost and the time and effort to make this happen. Um, but I, but I think it's so, so important to be able to have access. So I'm not talking against this. I'm just talking that. This is a decision that I believe we should make, but we, but we need to look at some of these old problems and we need to make sure we communicate that to our citizens. That if there is a cost to this and you know, will it be perfect? Yeah, it's man-made. So it's probably not going to be perfect the way we do it. But we want to do the best we can because of what, uh, Director Anderson has said. You know, we want to be transparent to our community so that they can see and hear what, what we're doing and try to understand why we make decisions we make. So those are my comments.
And I would just mention, we saw it already because we have to have the meeting, right? Don't we store it? Cause we have to have the, if people are doing public um information requests. We have that information, correct?
Correct.
If so, that is, and I think another factor is. And there's a cost every um information request. And there's already requests coming through for these uh for the meetings. So you know, that's. Staff time and you know, that, that there's a cost associated to that. So um.
The only thing I would add to your discussion for consideration is all of the things that were just discussed as well as um. Implementation timeline, what I would. What I would ask from the board is a direction to the superintendent and then allowing the superintendent to go to the experts in the field to say the who, what, where, when, why, how much, et cetera. If this is going to continue beyond COVID, then we need to know that we're going to need to have this type of setup continually, right? In terms of videotaping, so um, there's, there's a scope that we would want to look at. And so I wouldn't want you to say yes and think it's happening in February. There, there are some things to look at. Saying yes means we're going to do it. I just want to make sure I have the opportunity to look at it comprehensively with a scope and sequence and then implement it with fidelity and sustainability.
Just to comment on that, I, I, I totally agree. And, and so we have to work through and try to get it, the best fidelity we can. Um, you know, there's lots of tools out there and tools will change. Um, I, I mean, just, just an example tonight, I mean, people trying to dial in and give their comments online was. You know, I, I don't want to be respectful of everybody here. I, I'm sure there's lots of work been done, but it was pretty cumbersome. At least what it looked like from my perspective. And that's pretty, if you're out there, you're, you're frustrated. And so we, we need to try and understand where those um pieces of pain are and try to fix them. And uh, but that's through open discussion, at least trying to make it be happen.
Correct. And thinking about long-term, um, I hope everybody in here wants COVID to go away and wants the governor's proclamations to go away and ultimately virtual. Virtual means we can interface, may not be a requirement, but uh we would still, again, scope. We would still maybe want to film and post those meetings or even allow people to come into the meeting in terms of viewing, but not necessarily have the interactive piece for those that are on the screen. So again, there's a lot to consider there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Carol. Go ahead, Anthony. I apologize. I already called.
Oh, that's okay.
Just to add to the conversation as well, uh, I see it being a positive reinforcement to have these recordings public or and to have access to them. An idea, of course, is to perhaps have your own YouTube channel through Clover Park School District. Uh, then the data saves there, um, would be a lot less expensive perhaps. Um, and, and perhaps even moving forward to even when COVID is, is not with us any longer, to even have a hybrid uh continue down the road. Uh, just for the folks that may be, you know, working on the job or, you know, cooking dinner or wha- whatever the task may be, uh, to have options to even have that communication and openness. Uh, so that there's full understanding of what's going on within the school district.
Carol. Um, you know what? Those are all great points. I'm going to clarify, so as we move forward, we take this vote. We're voting for the superintendent to look into the issues of possibly having the recordings. Anthony, you know what? Your young thinking took us into YouTube, took us into a way that, you know, certainly beyond what we ever, ever thought of. I know we did at one point talk about putting this on cable. Cost was just too great. I think that technology has moved forward so much that we don't have to be dependent on that. So we would be then voting for our superintendent to look into all of the issues.
I, there's, there's no formal motion. This was just a matter of discussion that I had put on. So it's more of just a consensus of if, if we want to uh want to look into this, if we want IT to look into this, see, you know, well, superintendent and for the experts to look into, which I'm assuming have an IT background. But um, that is just a consensus more of, it sounds like everyone is interested in determining if this is feasible, um, you know, and what that would look like.
Thumbs up is a thumbs up, yeah.
Okay. That was great. The next matter of discussion is the standard operating procedures and district policies and its compliance with the RCWs. Um, so Director Anderson?
Director David Anderson uh moves that the Clover Park School District Board of Directors at its meeting of January tenth, twenty twenty-two, place and to review standard operating procedures and district policies to bring them into agreement with RCWs.
Okay. Or for the session?
Is that an example of a conflict that currently exists between policy and SOP? Policy fourteen hundred addresses meeting conduct, which indicates the presiding officer of the board can determine the venue for the board meeting. However, standard, standard operating procedures declare that their presiding officer cannot determine the venue for the board meeting as quote, "The authority of the board resides in collective decision of the individual board of directors." And that quote, "Only when acting as a whole does the board have authority." And further quote, "The board president will communicate the positions of the board on controversial issues after discussion with all board directors." Additionally, policy one four three zero point five addresses meeting conduct and states, quote, "The board as a whole shall have the final decision in determining the appropriateness of all such rulings by the presiding officer." But the real problem is that neither SOP nor policy is in agreement with RCWs. Here is RCW forty-two thirty oh five, quote, "The members plural of the governing body conducting the meeting may order the meeting room cleared and continued session or may adjourn the meeting in reaching beam at another location selected by the majority vote of the members." It is clear from the RCW language that venue changes, especially when the conduct of the audience is disruptive, is not the presiding officer's decision, but rather the decision of the members of the government body. Therefore, my motion, that the Clover Park School Board of Directors at its meeting of January tenth, twenty twenty-two, place and to review standard operating procedures and district policies to bring them into agreement. RCWs.
Yes.
I, I, I'd like to make an amendment to that motion. Because we have a conflict between RCWs or SOP and uh board policies. I, I move that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order twelfth edition as our guiding document for all future meetings until we get all those things resolved.
Okay, so there's a motion.
Second.
Okay. All right, so, did you want to discuss that further or getting the rest?
I, I don't think it needs a lot of discussion. I mean, uh, Director Anderson just shared, you know, I mean, we've got a conflict between those documents. That's a problem. So we got to get to something that, that, that people can look at a, a public meeting and say, hey, how's it being handled? Robert's Rules of Order is, is kind of the, the, the standard. And so if we just use that and, and then if we can come back and look at our SOP and we can look at our policies, we don't, we don't have time in the next couple of weeks or months to do that. So if we just go right to Robert's Rules of Order, we run our meetings that way, which is good.
Okay. I, I personally disagree. I think our standard operating procedures are in place for a reason and they uh supersede Robert's Rules of Order. So I don't feel comfortable removing those, I'm going um, straight to Robert's Rules of Order. I will, I, I'm interested to look into the Governor's Executive Order on virtual meetings. If you're, you're discussing the RCWs, but the executive order for the virtual meetings over to the in-person venue. So I'd be interested to see, I mean, I would like to look into that further because um because as I mentioned earlier, virtual is the only avenue that is required at this, at this time. And, and then we could choose to go. Yes.
As to the amendment adding Robert's Rules of Order as our parliamentary authority, here's a quote, "No society or assembly should attempt to transact business without having adopted some standard manuals on the subject as its authority in all cases not covered by its own special rules." Yes, we have the SOP. We have policies, but they're in conflict.
Yep, and policy fourteen hundred does say all board meetings will be conducted in an orderly and businesslike manner using Robert's Rules of Order revised as a guide, except when such rules are superseded by board bylaws or policies. The Robert's Rules of Order are, is a policy, but they just are underneath policies that are standard operating procedures. Carol. Okay. I'm not sure if you're trying to unmute. Okay, looks like you are. Oh, you're not unmuted.
I wasn't trying, but here's my thing. I, I, Alyssa, your statement was very um specific and I think that that is the operation way that we should continue to operate. I think having a review, if, if a question, if a board member has a specific question about an RCW or an SOP that is in conflict, then yes, we should address that. But I'm, I, I really think that our, I think the bylaws and the SOPs of, of an organization, Robert's Rules are a great procedural guide, but the SOPs, the bylaws are the actual working order. So if something's out of the skew, yes, we need to address that. I don't think we need to throw those out in favor of Robert's rules. So I agree with you on that.
Okay, so we'll go to a vote of the revised motion, which was to make the Robert's Rules of Order, um, I guess, set aside the standard operating procedures and follow the Robert, Robert's Rules of Order for future meetings until standard operating procedures can be reviewed. Yes.
So I'd like to just ask a question, but Mr. Anderson, are there certain things about the standard operating procedures that you have in conflict with?
Yeah, I just illustrated one of them.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't able to follow. Do you mind uh going over that briefly?
Sure. The SOPs declare that the presiding officer can determine. Policy fourteen hundred addresses meeting conduct, which indicates the presiding officer of the board can determine the venue for the board meeting. But then SOPs declare that he cannot do that because the authority of the board lies in the collective decision of the individual board members. And so you have policy fourteen hundred saying, yeah, the presiding officer can make this decision as to venue. And yet the SOP says, no, it can. It has to be a board, a boat that's physically taken by the board members. So right there is a great example. There are others uh that they don't agree. So you have to do something about that. And the something I'm suggesting is that those two are also in conflict with the RCWs, which trumps everything. If, if we're not following the law, then it really doesn't matter. Our parliamentary procedure, we must be in compliance with the RCWs and the SOPs and the policies are not.
Okay. So we will go to a vote to follow Robert's Rules of Orders instead of our standard operating procedures and policies. I, I, is that what you said? And policies?
Yes. Well, in, in the point of order is, don't we vote on any amendments?
I definitely, yeah, that's what I'm trying to vote on your amendment. I'm getting clarity. It was to follow Robert's Rules of Order, not our standard operating procedures. So, okay, and policies, that was my, okay, and policies. So we will, Carmen, could you do the roll call? Okay, um, Director Paul Blackman?
Yeah.
Director David Anderson?
Yes.
Director Anthony Velez?
May.
Director Carol Jacobs?
No.
And then President Alyssa Anderson Pearson?
No.
So we have three noes and two yeses, so that motion does not pass. Okay, so the motion to, for the replace, well, set aside the standard operating procedures for Robert's Rules of Order, doesn't pass. But now we have another motion on the table. And to, okay, so for standard operating procedures and district policies to come into compliance with RCWs.
Correct.
Okay. And was there a, I don't remember a second on that, but.
No, there wasn't.
There wasn't a second on that one. But you amended it, I guess, so.
I made a second.
Did you? Okay, that's, I, I truly can't remember. It was a, yeah, passing. Okay, so, did you want to speak on that further? Did you want to speak on that one further now that we're at this point? Okay. All right, could you go to, Carmen, could you uh roll call wheel on this one as well? Director Paul Blackman?
Yeah.
Director David Anderson?
Yes.
Director Anthony Velez?
Uh, no.
Director Carol Jacobs?
No.
President Alyssa Anderson Pearson?
No.
So we have three noes, three yeses. Motion does not pass. Okay, so next we'll go to board member reports. I'm, I'm going to start with Carol.
You know, I, I, I thank you all for your patience with me tonight. My family left, they came back. I had to walk out of the room. My, the room I went to had bad internet. You know what? I'm here planning my daughter, working, getting ready for my, for my daughter's wedding. So my board report will conclude with that. Thank you very much. I'm going to sign off now and wish you well.
Thank you, Carol. And I appreciate you spending your time afar with us. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Paul.
Um, let's see, legislative sessions, I get ready to go, so challenge to our legislative rep to stay on top. So one of the things I asked the previous board president, and he was going to get back to me, we haven't, haven't heard an answer. And there's a legislative rep issue, um, is how do we vote? I haven't seen the vote that we took, uh, and I'm particularly concerned about one of the issues uh that came up in, in that General Assembly and Legislative Assembly, that there are some people in our state that are requiring that uh board members that run for election don't have to be citizens. Uh, and I was just wondering what our position was on, how did we vote? Because unfortunately, the majority in our state said yes to that. And I could do, I, I want to know where Clover Park thinks that. What was our vote?
So just as a reminder, Paul, I think I did see that response. And I know that we checked with WASTA four uh in on that. And it was to, we have not traditionally recorded each individual vote and brought it back to the school district. And I think there was then the request to do a public records request through WASTA. So I just want you to know, I think I saw the response to that question and it was to reach out to WASTA with, for a public records request. And that was us going to WASTA saying, hey, look, we don't normally do this.
The district's going to do that?
No, no, you.
You want me to do that?
That is your request.
Anthony pushed the button. He knows what he voted.
That's the response that was given. It's for you to do a public records request. That's all I can say.
Okay. All right, thank you.
National School Board Association San Diego, I would like to attend virtually April second through the fourth, uh, including the pre-conference on April first. And I note that the registration deadline, pre-registration deadline, to save money, up to a hundred dollars is January fourteenth. Second item is, I appreciate the school district, uh, gave me enrollment in the Washington School, uh, State School Directors Association Board Book Camp. So I'm enrolled and prepared to take that. And then open government training and done. First reading.
Just want to say happy new year and that is my board report for now.
Yeah, as a reminder, December is a little bit not as exciting around here because school's on break and we have less meetings. But I had worked with uh in a permanent manner, I have received the brief on the uh, that whole school district conversation, which is why I was brought to this board. It was determined that it was, um, everyone obviously should have the information. uh, that whole school district conversation, which is why I was brought to this board. It was determined that it was, um, everyone obviously should have the information. Uh, and so I appreciate all the work that was put into that, and there's a lot more work to happen. And I don't have a lot more for this meeting, uh, or, you know, my board report today. So at this time, if no one has any additional, um. Oh, yep, sorry. Yep, there's one more. And there's the first reading of um, policies. There's once again quite a few. Um, so I'll play you red nose and it will go to, so at the next meeting, um. There's no executive session tonight. That would really, yes, yeah.
Well, I have a concern regarding the first reading of training and professional development for the board. And uh, just to request that, um, if possible, the local school board here have input into the process and recommends this matter be taken up at an upcoming school board meeting as to the training curriculum for cultural competency, equity, diversity, and inclusion. If it's possible to have a voice, a presence at the table, is that curriculum evidently is being developed? I think we should.
I believe that curriculum's being developed by WASTA. Um, and so what is it that you're ask, are you asking?
Again, for clarity's sake.
Are we asking to reach out to WASTA for a voice? And I think our voice at the table would be our DA three rep, um, but I will check with uh, with uh, executive director Garja, if that's acceptable to the board. I wanna make sure that.
Well, yeah, Anthony's on the board, so that would make logical sense to me, but or on the WASTA, it's, you're the, sorry, not the board, sorry. Well, no.
He's a legislator. Not for WASTA.
DA three rep is that first word.
Missed that.
Again, just for clarity's sake, if I have three members of the board tasking me, I'm happy to reach out to Tim Garja on the process for that. I don't know that there is any local contribution other than your DA three rep, who I believe in you would let that person know what your feelings are, and that person would bring it to the WASTA board, but I will check.
Well, just a question then, can I approach my WASTA rep?
Yeah.
Paul, Paul, can you help us with that? Uh, Paul served in that capacity for quite a few years. And so it, I believe so, that would be the person you would reach out to if you had questions about that.
I'll do it.
Okay. Would you like us to get you that person's name and contact information?
It's Rick. Yeah. Uh, the, the comment I wanna make on this, though, to add to what David's already said, the training and development for board members, uh, that's our district's policy. So I think there needs to be discussion here locally. I mean, WASTA can do whatever they darn well please, you know, as long as they meet the requirements of the legislature, it's levied on that. But we could certainly add to it. Uh, we may be able to subtract from it. I don't know that for sure until I see what's there. But uh, we could certainly add to it. And um, you know, I mean, if you just look, if you look at um, our existing policies, if, if you have controversial issues in, in the classroom, you need to give both sides. And so if there are issues that could be in this training that are deemed controversial, then we ought to make sure that we have opportunities to hear the other side.
The other side of diversity? I just for clarity.
Well, you, you know what's coming up in this trading?
I haven't seen it yet, so.
Nor, nor have I.
Okay, I, I, but, how do we know it's controversial, I guess, is my point.
I think it would be important to look into what the modules are. Uh, we have not developed the modules. They're being developed by WASTA. I believe Senate Bill fifty forty-four is what's driving this, so I can get you the language on Senate Bill fifty forty-four. Um, I, I don't know if that's gonna help clarify what you're asking for.
The bottom line is, we're gonna put a policy together. We're gonna put a policy together that somebody else is gonna push down towards us. If we may like it, we may not like it. However, I, I, I'm sure there's probably two different points of view on some of that stuff. And all I'm saying is, is that we discuss that, and this is our policy. This isn't, we don't have people write policies for us and say, hey, there's your policy. They can do laws, they can do laws and say, follow the law. But this is our policy, and so this is our first reading of this. All I'm saying is, is I think we ought to go slow on this one and have some discussion.
We do typically have WASTA write policy and they outline it as essential or um, recommended. Um, so again, just for clarity's sake, on, we do have policy that is handed to us, that is vetted by the folks at WASTA in terms of legal, et cetera. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't in terms of, I just wanna make sure it's clear that we get these policies from WASTA typically.
And, but that's recommended. All, all of WASTA stuff is recommended to the local school board.
Yes, some are essential.
We don't, we as elected officials on this school board don't report to WASTA. We report to our citizens. The citizens tell us what they want to have done. Okay, if, if WASTA doesn't tell us to do that, WASTA is just a group, they go to the big lobby of all school board directors, and they're getting together and trying to put the, what they think are the best thoughts together. There's, there's been some great discussions, you know, and I've enjoyed my opportunities to work with WASTA. All I'm saying is, this policy is our policy, and therefore we need to have the discussion.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying that when we say that we don't have people write policy for us, that's not accurate, because we do have.
Well, okay, it's a semantics thing, Ron. It's a semantics issue.
Okay, that's.
You know, you, you got lawyers down there looking at stuff. Lots of people help you write things. But bottom line is, when, when we go through the first reading, we review it, and we're basically saying, that's what we believe, and that's what we're supporting.
And you're saying is. Got it. And you're clearly passionate about it. And so I, I feel it's almost argumentative, and I'm not gonna engage in arguments. I'm just making sure that what goes on record is accurate. So I'm not making a statement as to either way of what you're saying, except for the fact that we do have people write policy for us. So I don't want it to seem like we're just accepting everything that walks in the door. So I don't wanna be argumentative. It feels like you're passionate and like this is an argument. It's not, not for me.
Yes.
I don't have anything else on that issue, but I have one on the next one. Addressing school director violations, first reading.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I recommend that we add, in his interest of accuracy, RCW forty-two thirty-one twenty-five F to school director violation policy.
Can you say that one more time?
Forty-two thirty. Yeah, uh, forty-two thirty-one two-five, letter F, should be added to policy eighteen twenty-five, first reading, addressing school director violations. It should be added because it specifically is pertinent to the issue, because it states to receive and evaluate complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Upon their request of such officer or employee, a public hearing or meeting opened to the public shall be conducted upon such complaint or charge. In quote, that is the RCW, and it needs to be included with the other RCWs in the first reading of eighteen twenty-five.
I will work with uh, Brian to, is that at least as a uh,
Look at.
Yeah, like an underscore as an option piece, and then you guys can make your decision.
Yeah.
Nothing further.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to, well, there's no executive session, so sorry, move to adjournment. So is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? All right, seconded by Anthony. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, all those, so say that. All right, motion passes here honestly, and we are adjourned at nine twenty. Yeah.